Or is yours?
Thank you. Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for May 10, 2022 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure the hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting, as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to give comments on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, press *9 to raise and lower your hand, and press *6 to unmute yourself if you are attending this meeting by telephone. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Just a reminder, this is being conducted as a regular meeting, so when the board is taking testimony or is in discussion, please refrain from interrupting. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. I will now take a roll call of board members. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Morning, Mr. Rogiro.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes.
Ms. Dong.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Hampton from BPDA.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, and is Mr. D'Amico on from BTD? Okay, Mr. Fortune, let's get started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of April 5 of 2022. We need a motion.
Motion approved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On the first extension, calling BOA 916-15114, Snow Street. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Fang on? Mike Fang on? I'll come back to him. I'll come back to the first one. I'm going to call the next two cases, calling BOA 919-609-2537 Frankfurt Street. There is a companion case, BOA 919-610-120 Gov. Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street.
Thank you, Mr. Echol. In regards to 2537 Frankfurt Street and 120 Gov. Street, this was 2537 Frankfurt. The board originally granted this relief on June 14 of 2019, and it granted the first extension of relief until June 14 of 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original grant of relief remains valid until September 19 of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until September 19 of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension. Madam Chair, the same purpose is 120 Gov. Street. Would you like me to read that into the record, or is that fine?
Are the dates exactly the same?
The dates are exactly the same.
Okay, so we've read both into the record. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant an extension through September 19, 2023, and that includes all applicable tolling.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 486-152270 Dorchester Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCastla, 75 Arlington Street in Boston.
Thank you, Mr. LaCastla. In regards to 270 Dorchester Avenue, the board originally granted this relief on July 14 of 2017. The board then granted the first extension of relief until July 14 of 2020. Tolling applies to this extension. With tolling, the first extension remained valid until October 19 of 2021. In the intervening time, the board granted a second and third extension that were unnecessary. However, the board's most recent extension extended the relief beyond the told expiration day. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this extension encompassed all applicable tolling. The applicant now requests an additional one-year extension until July 14 of 2023. I recommend that the board grant this extension if it determines it's appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account it would only be the applicant's third necessary extension.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Fortune, what was that date again?
Mr. Rogiro, that date would be an additional one-year extension until July 14 of 2023.
I'll make a motion to extend until July 14, 2023, and that includes all applicable tolling, and hopefully this project gets off the ground.
Yes, it didn't blow past us, Mr. LaCastla, that this is the third one, so we expect that we will not see you in relation to this project.
We're in the final stages of design review at BPDA, and I'm happy to report that the new developer is eager to get started.
Excellent. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Madam Ambassador, is anybody from Snow Street on? 14 Snow.
I didn't check. I didn't see my on earlier. Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me just make sure that... Joseph, are you here for this case, for Echo Polo, Snow Street? I see your hand is raised. Hi, Joseph, are you here for this case? I think we might be all set. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, what would you like to do?
Let's go ahead and please rely on the office. We will rely on the office to get the message to the applicant.
So do you want me to call into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. On the record, calling BOA 916-15114, Snow Street. In regards to 14 Snow Street, the board originally granted this relief on April 12 of 2019, and it granted the first extension of relief until April 12 of 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original grant of relief remains valid until July 18 of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until April 12 of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Motion, please?
I'll make a motion to extend until April 12, 2023, and that includes all applicable tolling.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
On the first case for G Card, case BOA 130-5679, One Otis Place. This is a complete interior gut remodel, rebuilding. Existing windows to be restored, new elevator. Violation's Article 32, Section 4. This is G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Kevin Goggan, 400 Atlantic Avenue, business address, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, are these new units? What are they?
Yes, ma'am. So this will be a redo of a seven-unit residential building that'll be combined into a primary residence with an additional gardenable unit.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions on the scope.
Okay, may I hear from Mr. Semenella?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kristen Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Clearly, also have those letters.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 130-7773-397, Commonwealth Avenue. This is a change of art from a dormitory lodging house to six dwelling units. Violation's Article 32, Section 4, the G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Name is James Green. I'm attorney at Ruben &amp; Rudman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant for the property. I believe also our engineer is available.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions from me.
Are these micro-units, by any chance? Do you know?
None at all, Madam Chair. These are substantial large units. This was a dormitory for young women attending colleges. This was a private dormitory operated by a Catholic order. Console to my client, they're doing a complete rehab of this building.
Thank you.
All zoning compliant.
Thank you. Mr. Semenelli?
Members of the board, Kristen Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Madam Chair, we have those letters as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 131-8116-146, Commonwealth Avenue. It's a complete partial gut renovation to a single-family townhouse. Include new mechanicals, new finishes, and change occupancy from a dormitory to a single-family. Violation's Article 32, Section 5. This is G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is David Lindhart with Coolstone and Stores, 400 Atlantic Ave. And this project has been read into the record as a rehabilitation for a single-family use.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions.
Mr. Semenelli?
Members of the board, Kristen Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Yep, we have those letters as well, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals. Give me the address first, please, for this is 9:30 only, deferrals or withdrawals.
Hello, Mr. Secretary. This is Mike Ross. The address is 535 Washington Street.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. On the record, calling BOA 117-3599, 535-537V, Washington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross, attorney at Prince Lobel, One International Place. We made some late changes, minor modifications, to the plans, and unfortunately, the rule is you need to get those in within two weeks of the hearing, so that the plans examiner has time to review and that your board architect has times to review, even if it's the most minor of changes, as is the case here. And because we weren't able to do that, we are requesting a deferral to allow the board and staff time to review said documents.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
You'll have a date of July 12 at 11:30.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 9:30 cases? If there are none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA 128-3596, 101 Saratoga Street. This is to combine two lots into a newly created single lot to be 1,992 square feet. A change of occupancy from commercial space on grade and two units above to six residential units with roof decks. Renovate the existing three-story dwelling and add in addition to the rear. All existing floors will be lowered and reframed with new bays along Saratoga Street and Marion Street. Violation's Article 2017-T-5. This is in the East Boston I card. Article 32, Section 4, G Card applicability. Articles 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 57.3, traffic visibility across the corners. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio was excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. And I have the page numbers you can probably jump right to for ease of use for the board. If we could jump to page 6, Madam Ambassador, that would be great to start off. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use and structure located at the lower end of the Eagle Hill section of East Boston. Our proposal would be to eliminate the ground-level commercial use and to add in addition to the rear of the building, reprogram the entire building to a multifamily use. This would result in a very substantial upgrade to the entire building. We are proposing to have private roof decks for the upper level. Those would be accessed by hatch, of course, not with any proposal for a headhouse. This is located, however, in a 2F, 2000 district. That is the zoning that's been in place since 1993 in East Boston. As you can see from some of the context photos, we are surrounded by numerous multifamily residential uses. This is located less than a block from the smaller commercial district located on Bennington Street.
So, Mr. Lins, can you tell us first a couple of things? So the zoning district is 2F 2000. So you're talking about combining the two lots to result in 1,992 square feet?
That is correct. The current building, which contains the commercial use and two residential units above, is already on a non-conforming-sized lot. We would be adding a rear parcel that would result in approximately just under 2,000 square feet total. We believe that the rear lot was a part of the existing lot.
But let's just get an understanding. So what is the lot size, then?
1,992 square feet.
Okay, so then it looks like the neighborhood context might be three families at maximum. So can you talk through the number, the units, the size of the units?
Sure.
And also talk through the roof decks?
Sure. Yeah, and with respect to the context, Madam Chair, and as I showed in the street photos, diagonally and directly across the street in all directions are multifamily structures, including a large elderly complex directly across the street. It's a reused former middle school. The two buildings, both directly across and diagonally across, are six-plus unit buildings as well. With respect to the unit size, these are all being proposed as two-bedroom units. The size averages around 860 square feet. There is one unit based upon the existing layout, so it's just about 700 square feet. And I understand that, you know, certainly we can look at modifying the size of that unit based upon the minimum-size requirements. The actual zoning violations that would be applicable in this case first would be the change to a further non-conforming use. Because this is ground-level commercial with residential, it is already non-conforming. We're proposing to substitute that with multifamily, which is more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. In addition, we already have the existing condition of a non-conforming height. Because the 2F district does permit only two and a half stories, about 35 feet, this is already a pre-existing three-story building. It will remain a three-story building, but in order to address the violation as a result of the addition that we're proposing, we do require variance for the height, because that would be a three-story addition. In addition, we would be increasing the FAR. The current FAR obviously being non-conforming above the 80% that's permitted in the East Boston district for this neighborhood. We would be increasing that up to about 2.9, which because we have almost entire lot coverage at three levels, we would be increasing the FAR significantly. But I would point out that this is a corner lock condition, very similar to what we've dealt with other corner lots, where it's difficult to create sort of the setbacks that are usual mid-block or on lots that are, you know, much wider for purposes of compliance with the regulations under Article 53.
And the roof deck, from what I can gather, is accessed by hatches?
That is correct. We actually proposed this originally. This was being proposed a four-story building based on consultation with the neighborhood. We kept it a three-story in exchange for some concessions that we were proposing.
Okay, Mr. Semenelli?
Morning. We have both letters from the applicant.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have them as well.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. You know, I think the height is consistent. I guess I'm a little unsure why they're sort of... The addition, I think, could be seen as an addition to, you know, a nice historical corner building, and it sort of seems like it's going the other way. So I don't, in terms of the proposed scope, have any real questions, but I have a little bit of a question of the architecture and the approach. But generally, I think the units are fine, and the roof decks are accessed by hatch from the units below. So no other questions for me.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant. The addition is now on, looks like from Google Maps, an empty lot. So it means that if this were approved, the entire combined lot would be covered by the building. There'd be zero usable open space. What is the open area used for now?
Mr. -- through the chair, Mr. Ehrlich, the open area is a separately assessed parcel. It is used for parking, but not parking required for the building. I would term it as convenience parking. We are seeking a parking variance for this proposal. However, we have arranged, not as part of any formal ancillary use, we have arranged for four off-street parking spaces within close walking distance of the site. And that was in response to some of the comments that we heard from the neighborhood.
So there's currently a curb cut into that space now. You would close that off and have street parking there instead?
That would be correct. In our original iteration of this project, where we did have four stories, we were proposing to have some ground-level parking. That was met with some concern and resistance from some abutters. The removal of the curb cut on Marion Street certainly will return on-street parking to the public, and that seemed to be a good compromise, especially since we're able to find some remote parking to associate with the building.
Thank you.
To pick up on Mr. Robinson's point, I think, so what is the distance from the building, the current building to the abutter and the current and the proposed building from anything abutting it? Because I just want to make sure that we're not, in fact, eliminating light and air and all those necessary things to the abutters and possible new construction on any abutting lot.
Sure. So presently, I believe the setback, Madam Chair, is about 18 feet in width. The zoning district permits a two-and-a-half-foot setback if this were considered a side yard. Because we are dealing with a corner lock condition, we essentially have side yards on both Marion and Saratoga Street. On the Saratoga Street elevation, we are attached to the building next to us. That would not be the condition on the rear, because we are further back than our building immediately to our left on Saratoga. We are proposing a setback, I believe it's at two-and-a-half feet, on the Marion Street elevation, which would be consistent with a typical side yard setback for buildings in the 2F 2000 district.
Okay, and I understand, you know, the community conversation about parking, but has the applicant, the developer, looked at decreasing the number of units and, in fact, decompressing the parking situation by providing the parking spaces on the undeveloped lot in support of this building?
So we did that originally, Madam Chair. The configuration of the building in order to accommodate that resulted in an increase in height, a vertical addition as well. We opted to eliminate that...
I think my question is, you know, can you... Has the developer looked at maintaining the height, decreasing the number of units, and providing off-street parking and perhaps some associated open space?
We did look at... With the current version, we did look at an option that actually had two parking spaces on the proposed addition. It would be probably not feasible to add the parking under the existing structure if we're preserving the existing structure. Engineering-wise, it would probably be very difficult to do that. So we did look at the option of two. We did, and there was sort of a mixed commentary on this, but because we are within relatively short walking distance of airport station, we did hear support from abutters that said that they preferred... we did hear support from abutters that said that they preferred that this would be a project that recognized homeless households as well because of its proximity to Airport T Station, as well as the opportunity to remove that curb cut and add some on-street parking for the public.
Okay. Let's just see. Mr. D'Amico, did you have a comment?
Yes, I was just wondering if there is any parking provided. I haven't seen a parking plan at all. If anything, if any parking spaces would be provided. If there are, I would like to critique the design.
There's no parking proposed under this plan, Mr. D'Amico.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support and then followed by opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venites with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in December of 2021. The association voted in support of the project. They liked the unit sizes. And the abutters had some concerns regarding number of units and rear addition, but they're happy to see changes that will improve the conditions of the existing property. At this moment, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Go ahead.
Sorry. Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have some letters of support. We have one letter of opposition.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay. May I hear from the BPDA as the city's planning agency?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommended denial on this just because of the massing. In our recommendation, we also cited, you know, the lack of usable open space and also the setback for the addition on Marion Street, understanding that this is a non-conforming structure already. Our concerns are mainly with Marion Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, I understand the BPDA's position. We're, you know, when dealing with corner lots, that this is always a challenge to have either a gap between the building for open space that looks more like an empty lot versus actually developing the site. And typically, it's not uncommon to see the corner lots develop in this manner.
Yeah. My thought is that the developer could have been a little bit more thoughtful and figured out a way to, you know, get, not bank on their largest ROI, but figure out a way to make this long-term usable because, you know, sometimes, you know, people work in places that are not, you know, blue line accessible or something else. So or they work odd hours or whatever it is. And so it's that. Is this supposed to be rental or purchase?
This is intended for ownership, so these would be condos.
Okay. Okay, so given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Can we just see your rendering up on the screen, please?
Mr. Lance, what sheet should we be looking at?
You can go to 19 would probably be a good rendering or 17 is an elevation.
All right. If someone wants to go ahead with the motion, that's fine.
Can I... Who's running the screen today? Can you guys just go back to the plans? Thank you.
Page 17 is the elevation and 19 would probably be a good rendering.
Yeah, you have to remove.
Further down, perhaps, that's 12 and it is 17.
Any one of those would probably work.
So I'm gonna make... I hear everyone's concerns, but I drive around that area a lot, and these vacant areas on the corners are real eyesore to the neighborhood. I'll make a motion to approve, but with some heavy BPDA design review to try to match the surrounding buildings.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm opposed because I do think that the applicant could have been more creative on this one, but motion carries for approval with design review.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
On the next case, calling BOA 129196835 Upton Street. This is for Unit 3, constructing new rear balcony with steel frame, the new exterior door. The violation is Article 64, Section 9. Townhouse, row house extensions into the rear yard. Name and address for the record, please.
This is John Greenup, counsel for the applicant, and my address is Box 380694, Cambridge, Massachusetts. And I'm joined today by Matt Cerisi, who is the contractor in charge of the project, and...
So a question is, is that bracket supported?
Yes, I believe it is. We can go down.
And what is the dimension of that bracket-supported balcony?
It's 6 by 23 feet.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. It confirmed it is a bracket-mounted, and the dimensions are as indicated. No questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Crucilli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to defer to the board on this matter. An abutter meeting was held on March 16th of 2022 where support was shown by the abutters. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Sling's office. The councilor would like to hold record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, BPDA design review. Has it been the landmarks?
Yes, I believe it's been.
Yes, I think it has, so I don't think there's BPDA design review.
Yeah, we don't need to see it if landmarks is already stamped off on it.
Okay, I didn't know if they had.
So there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 117791282 to 84 Boston Street. This is to construct a single-phase digital billboard, freestanding pylon sign to the rear of 82 Boston Street. The violation is Article 65, Section 40. Sign regulations, freestanding signs, use is forbidden. Article 9, Section 1. Extension of a non-conforming use is conditional. Articles 11, Section 6. Signs are subject to other regulations. Article 33, Section 16. Beer-rate pylon sign is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9. Side yard residential dimension is insufficient. Article 11, Section 9. Electronic signs are conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz from Adams &amp; Ameri-Fancy with the business address of 350 West Broadway, South Boston. With me today is the billboard operator, Media Partners. His name is Peter McClary, who will be joining me as well. So as read into the record, this is a proposal to construct a 14-foot by 48-foot single-phase digital billboard, freestanding pylon to the rear of the property of 82...
I'm sorry, Counselor. What was the dimension of that billboard? 14 by what?
14 by 48.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is, this will be constructed to the rear of the property of 82 through 84 Boston Street on Interstate 93, which is owned by the Polish American Citizens Club, a nonprofit organization. A conditional permit will be required if this is approved. We understand and we respect the board and the city's position on billboards, but this is...
So Counselor, can you just talk through the billboard so we can understand it in context of the lot? Is there anything that will show it where it's going to be on the lot? And any rendering or anything about that billboard?
So the plan survey, which was submitted as far as the plans that you do have, was would show the actual location of the billboard on the rear of the property overlooking Interstate 93.
Okay, tell us what sheet the we should be looking at?
So this should be, I mean, it should be right at...
Page 20, page 21, 20, sorry.
Great.
20, okay. And so this would be a digital billboard, then?
Yes, correct. So we understand and respect the board and the city's position on billboards, but this is a unique proposal that would also assist in the city's vision of decluttering billboard signs in residential neighborhoods. We've committed to removing three existing locations from the Dorchester neighborhoods and replacing or adding one of this digital-faced single billboard on Interstate 93, a location where billboards should be and not in our neighborhoods. One of those three locations have been currently identified, which will remove four faces from the neighborhood. That is in the area of Freeport Street and Dorchester Ave. The other two locations will soon be identified collaboratively, working together with our District City Councilor Baker's office and as well as the local civic association. Further, we would request that if this is approved, that no permit shall issue until those three locations have been officially removed from our neighborhoods.
And are those all legal billboards or are they illegal billboards? Because we know we do have a lot of illegal billboards in our city.
So those are all legal billboards as far as to my knowledge, to the best of my knowledge there. So there are active conversations with the landlords, which have been identified as far as three locations. One, again, has been confirmed in the previous location, as I stated, on Dorchester Ave and Fremont Street, which consists of four faces of billboards. So there's actually two billboards on the property that are double-faced that will be removed. And again, those are within our residential neighborhoods. And then the two other locations will be determined, obviously, prior to having a permit issued if this shall be approved. And again, we would request that a proviso be added stating that no permit shall issue until these three locations have been determined and have been removed as discussed here today.
Okay, so it looks like no new billboards shall be allowed within 600 feet of a federally funded highway subject to the Federal Highway Beautification Act unless approved by the Board of Appeal. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, got it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Oh, there's no... I guess I would expect to see some visual aid of this in terms of its context from Interstate 93, from the adjacent bridge across 93, some other visuals. This is the only real drawing that shows anything associated with it. So it's a little hard for me to assess. I mean, the information is here in terms of the basic construction of the billboard, but nothing related to its visual impact on anything, so.
Madam Chair, Secretary, have you seen BPDA's recommendation?
Yes, we'll wait till we get there.
Okay. So a little hard for me to assess it from anything other than what it is, I think.
Okay. So hold on, Ms. Counselor. So this is freestanding. This is in a residential sub-district. It's a 3FD 2000 district. Will there be parking below that? What, how is it going to work?
So there is no parking below there. So as you can see, well, try to depict the actual picture. So as you can see here, this is the rear of the property, Interstate 93. It will be overseeing. As you may see, that there's Roche Street. There's three abutters that will have any sort of visual. These are the only abutters that will have some sort of visual, which would be minimal visual of the actual sign. They'll have a side view. So which is great for us is that there's this new light-blocking technology that I'm sure Peter McClary can get a little bit more into.
Yeah, no, we know about that, and we know how neighborhoods feel that. In certain neighborhoods, they're just, they don't, they're not responsive. So if I look at this, it looks like you're adding a two-story addition. Is that right to this building?
No, there is no two-story addition. This is going to be on the existing condition of the building itself. So again, there'll be a freestanding pylon not attached to the rear of the building. It would just be placed in the backyard of the building, very close.
Okay. And is that triangular parcel there also owned by the applicant?
Correct, yes, it is.
Okay.
Also, the applicant has committed to the neighbors of some new plantings to prevent any sort of an eyesore from 93 that they actually do have. And it also would help with the exhaust that they do, that does accumulate from Interstate 93 as well.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm a little confused about a couple of things. We don't have a rendering, is that correct? We don't to be able to see how it is viewed from various angles from the neighborhood? That's question number one. And then question number two, I was very confused about this concept of three other existing billboards coming down in exchange for this? That's the proposal. Where are those billboards? What are they? And are they all owned by the same? It just seems like a... I don't think I've ever heard anything like that before.
Great. So, yes, all right. So I can get a little bit more into the actual billboard itself. So the operator has committed to removing three existing static locations. As you know, this location here is overlooking 93. And again, the city's vision is to declutter some of these static signs that are actually in the middle of our residential neighborhoods. We've worked together with the district counselor and the local civic group, McCormick Civic Association. We determined one location, and it's in the vicinity of Dorchester Ave and Fremont Street. That location there has two billboards double-faced. So there's four faces that actually will be removed from this location. And again, as far as the other two, those are still collaboratively being worked together along with the district counselor and the local civic group to determine those two locations to try to find more of the static locations that are factored into our neighborhood that we can. I know that the operator is in active discussions with some of these landowners.
So I think, Counselor, what we're trying to understand is, are these potential billboards that are, these billboards that are proposed to be eliminated, are they owned by the same media company?
No, they are not.
Or they're potentially buying out other media companies, then?
I don't know the exact terms. I just know that there's active conversations.
Okay.
No, but that goes to the heart of my question. How can you commit to removing other billboards that you don't control?
Well, the active conversations that these guys have committed prior, you know, to hand in other locations outside of the city of Boston have come to fruition. And the intention is to have their proviso. If, in fact, these three locations do not come down, no permit shall issue.
Okay, and all right. So that, okay. And then my initial question had to do with the rendering of how it looks. Eric, do we have anything like that?
We don't. I mean, are you saying, and you, just one question. You said Fremont Street or Freeport Street? Is this...
Initially, he initially said Freeport, but it's Fremont because you've said that twice.
It's, I believe, it's Freeport Street in Dorchester.
Freeport, it's not Fremont.
Freeport or Fremont?
Yeah.
That's my error. My apologies.
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me, if I might add something. It's Peter McClary from Media Partners. We do have visual renderings, and I'm not entirely sure why they haven't been delivered to the board because we've had to present them to our abutters and the civic association, including Mr. Hung. So if they can't be provided right now, maybe they should be provided.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah.
Let me just go now for, to see if there's anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting for the proposal on September 23rd, 2021. There were mixed opinions on the digital billboard. Those in opposition cited potential negative effects of light pollution on neighbors and distractions on drivers. Those in support spoke in favor of the benefits of the billboard and what they would provide for the Polish club. Months passed with the developer continuing outreach, and since March, the most immediate abutters expressed support, and the McCormick Civic Association voted in support of the proposal. The bordering Columbia... The bordering Columbia Seven Hill Civic has written a letter of opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have those la- we have letters of support, we also have the letters of opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of the City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. The council would like to note that this project has gone through an extensive community process. And as a result, has received support from Director Abutters as well as the area civic association. The project will remove three billboards from the surrounding area that are considered a blight. And importantly, this billboard will enable a longtime area nonprofit, the Polish American Citizens Club, to remain in operation. Therefore, Council Flaherty would like to go on record of support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you have a few raised hands? Start with Elizabeth, stop. You've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth, I live at Chabber, I live at thirty-one Rossin Street. I am the most immediate abutter to the billboard. And I, and I will, only, only a butter that will view this directly that will be impacted by the billboard. And I support the project, I support the projects because I grew up in the area, I'm Polish. And the American Citizen Club is an important organization for the Polish community. It has been around for seven, and the billboard is the, the only thing that will keep it survive financially. So that's why I'm supporting it.
Hey, can I, anybody else who speaks, please give us new information? And after you speak, please lower your hand.
And then Peter, you're next, can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, uh my name is Peter Dizik, uh my address is one forty-one Dorchester Avenue, Unit two twenty in South Boston. Um I am actually the current treasurer of the Polish American Citizens Club. Um I just wanted to briefly, first off, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I just wanted to take a a quick second to talk about.
No, no, hold on, um your, your, your attorney gave us the information that we need. We know the Polish American Club. I'd like to hear from the abutters on this proposal. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
And Alexander?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hello, can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Alexander Kowalczek, I live at fifty-four St. Margaret Street. I'm here in support of the project. Um the Polish Club is a pillar of the community and preserves the Polish identity in the Polish Triangle. Um and I just, as a resident, I just wanted to express my support for this project.
Thank you. Okay, and we have, uh Bot? Send a request, I mean, can you state your name and address for the record?
Folks, my name, William Tchubuko, twenty-eight Rossin Street, Dorchester, Mass. I wanna say uh good morning, members of the board. My wife and I have childcare responsibilities, so I need to make my testimony brief. Uh my name is William Tchubuko, my wife Alexandra is the homeowner and partner butter. We reside within one hundred feet of this proposal. My wife has given me her authority and consent for me to speak on her behalf due to childcare responsibilities.
Tell me, are you, are you in support or in opposition?
I'm getting to that right now, Chair. Uh you should have my wife's email support on record. I asked you to reference that. So on behalf of my wife and myself, we support this proposal as a gesture of peace going forward for all parties involved and most importantly, for our family's well-being.
Thank you. Thank you. May I, Mr. Ambassador?
Yes, I'm the reminder.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board. First of all, good morning and happy Mother's Day to all the most present at this meeting. Uh I, we, the carpenters union, we own the headquarters, our building at seven fifty Dorchester Avenue. None of the other locations were a little, I am not sure if there's gonna be any positive or negative effect to our uh building. Um just wanna bring that up to your attention, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one additional hand, Erica? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi, good morning. Uh my name is Erica Minchuk Sox, my address is thirteen Dorset Street in Dorchester, Mass. Um I've been a resident of the Polish Triangle for almost fifteen years. I also grew up in this neighborhood. Um and um in addition to just being a member, to living in the community for as long as I have, um I have been a member of the Polish Club, I am currently on the board. And I wanna just kind of point out that this billboard would sustain the future of this club. We have been around.
Thank you, no, thank you. We, we are very familiar with the club, they've been before us before, so thank you. Um so, um, Mr. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
No more.
Um may I hear from the BPDA, the city's planning agency?
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Uh as with all electronic signs and billboards, we recommend a denial. Uh we feel that it's an inappropriate location. Also, without any sort of rendering being submitted as part of our review, we can't, we couldn't make a recommendation anyway uh to support it, but our policy is to always oppose electronic billboards. So we're on record for denial, thank you.
And that's been a, a city policy for?
Yes, for a very long time, thank you.
Okay, got it. Um given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve um with the following provisos. Um that the permit doesn't issue until the applicant figures out the three billboards that will be removed. I know they figured out one, but the additional two um in BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Secretary.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sure it would help to have a rendering, but.
No, hold on, hold on, we are, we are in a motion state, we kinda know what billboards look like. So I hear two voices in support of that, three voices in support of the motion and the provisos. Is every, so whoever is in opposition, please raise your voices.
I'm in opposition, Jean.
Eric's in opposition.
I'm in opposition, so um the motion does not carry. So is that right?
Can I make another motion?
No, so it's been denied.
Madam Chair, Mr. Robinson, I believe stated he would like to make a motion.
Yes.
No, but there's three oppositions, so it's been denied. There was a, um so it's, it's been denied, thank you.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA one-two-eight zero-zero-eight-four forty-one Door Street. This is a proposed curb cut to add two off-street parking spaces. The violation is Article fifty, section, section twenty-nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Please on, one second, um Martha.
Hi, thank you for um, I have to stay as an attendee. I'm not sure why it's not turning on my camera.
You have to hit it with a panelist, I, I tried to make you a panelist and you didn't accept it, I'm gonna try it again.
Okay.
Okay, go on.
So tell us what you're proposing.
Thank you, I apologize for the little technical difficulty. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Mark, I am the owner of uh forty-one Door Street in uh Fort Hill, Roxbury, Boston. Um I currently owner occupy the building um with my family. My plan here is to essentially um create a curb cut in the back of the property on the rear, rear of the lot in order to create off-street parking. Um this is on Lambert Avenue. And it's Lambert Avenue on the left side, if you're coming down the road, is a no-parking side. So this would not be removing any parking off the street. Um and it would be essentially creating space for one to two vehicles. Um the building was his, had been empty for quite a bit of time. Um and now there are over ten occupants living in it and a lot have cars. So um in speaking to my abutters, um a lot of them were in support just to avoid congestion on this corner. Um the.
So, so tell us, um so if I'm looking at the drawing that's up on the screen, um your property line, so your property line is not, does not go to the chain link fence, that is city of Boston property back there.
Correct, that chain link fence has been there pre-existing, I, I did not put it there.
Okay, so your property, the, the, the dash line in the back, right, right address, just into the building is the, is the, is the property, right?
Yes, it's the, it's the first line from the building, yes.
Okay, um. Can, can, can everybody please mute?
Yes.
Okay, um how's the plans, Mr. Robin?
Uh, plans are good, I think that um, you know, it's not a front yard per se, I guess it's a side yard, but it is quite close to the property line due to the, the sort of, I'd like to hear Mr. D'Amico's uh proposal on this. And it is noted as a fourteen-foot curb cut. I think we typically propose a ten-foot curb cut for a residential, but uh no other questions other than that.
Mr. D'Amico?
Yeah, Madam Chair, ladies, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTV. Um the length of the parking area is much too small. Uh the minimum would be thirty-six feet and this is only twenty-six feet. Um I think there'd be potential for an overhang on the sidewalk, so I'm gonna recommend denial.
Thank you. Um is, any, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jason Gant with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Mark had met with the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition on two separate occasions. One time, uh just to reference, his before case was the actual roof deck that they had um agreed on. But they did oppose the two parking spaces, citing that they felt that it was not enough adequate space for the parking. But then also additionally, they were parking concerns with the, with the um location that he had chosen as there were city bollards installed there. And with the plans that he has shown to the coalition, the bollards would have to be removed. And there were numerous traffic issues with the folks coming out from Lambert Ave side and actually having a few car mishaps. So folks don't feel safe with the proposal that Mark has given here, but do welcome him back to show any new uh changes to the proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support. We also have one letter of opposition and the opposition was what the mayor just stated about the bollards.
Mr. Ambassador?
I do have one raised hand, Zion sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please, if you're looking to give testimony here? I'll send Bob's name to raise, Bob, are you looking to give testimony here?
We've heard from Bob, Bob. Can you add your last name, please, to your um, to your identifier here? Um give us the information, may I have a motion, please?
I, I, I'll actually, I'll make a motion to approve. Um I think there is some ability to rework this a little bit, maybe even keep two of the bollards um and work with the BPDA on uh seeing if they can go deeper and maybe not as much paving to the side. So I, I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Yeah, can we just, maybe, yeah, just maybe like a fence with like a gate to, you know, if we can just put, put that on the radar for design review and I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I, I would also, I'd like to amend it to uh reduce the curb cut size from fourteen to ten. So all those are fine for me in terms of my approval. So add a, a gate or a fence to make sure there's no overhang. Um and then reduce the size of the curb cut and work with the BPDA on screening and buffering and the existing bollards um to their best of their ability.
So Mr. Robinson, are we making a gate mandatory on this design review? Or just making sure that they don't overhang and we can push the spaces back as far as possible?
Yes, a gate would be helpful, um I think, but I guess not required.
Whatever strategy that keeps it off the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, alright, thank you.
Okay, is there, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, it's now ten thirty-four, I'm gonna call the ten thirty cases for any deferrals or withdrawals for ten thirty only. If you give me the address first, please.
Fifty-nine Falcon.
Hold on two seconds, one at a time, what was the first, say it again?
Fifty-nine Falcon.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA one-three-one-one seven-six-three fifty-nine Falcon Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, two forty-five Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Are you, are you, what are you, are you requesting a deferral?
I'm sorry, yeah, yes, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Um so we did hear from the BPDA on some of its um recommendations on this. We'd like to go back and take a look to see if there's some way to rework some of the details on this project. Um and we believe that we uh can work a little bit more closely with the neighborhood, so we're requesting a deferral.
Can, can I ask everybody to please um mute yourselves so that we can um hear what's going on? Um may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, the, the date, please?
They have a date of July twelfth at eleven-thirty.
With, um, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, is it possible to get after July thirtieth or before uh July first?
We can do uh, we can do August ninth.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, August ninth at eleven-thirty. Is there any other, anybody else?
Seven fifty-three East Broadway.
For the record, calling BOA one-two-five five-seven-seven-three seven fifty-three East Broadway. Name and address for the record, please.
Tom Miller, Dermot Colthian Miller in Boston, representing the owner. Um we're going, we're requesting a deferral um at the request of City Council President uh Flynn's office to continue to work on some issues addressed by the abutters regarding uh parking and other matters.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, the date, please?
They have a date of uh July twelfth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for ten thirty only? Okay, going back to the nine thirty cases, calling B case BOA one-three-zero eight-zero-five-four twenty-three Ariga Street. This is a porous slab relocating heating system, new bathroom violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please. It's Christie or Scott Driscoll on this call.
Well, let me ask you, I know they're on already, yeah, they are. Okay, go ahead, you've been unmuted. Hi, we can't hear you, go ahead. Hi, Kristen, Scott, are you speaking? We can't hear you.
Okay, let's just move to the next case, please.
Sorry, the audio wasn't working.
Okay, so go ahead, put your name and address on the record.
Sure, my name is Kristen Driscoll, twenty-three Ariga Street, Dorchester.
And tell us, go ahead, just tell us what you're planning on doing.
Sure, we are planning on finishing existing space in our basement. So we'll be adding about um six hundred square feet to the basement of livable space and then we'll be adding a storage room in the back. So the, what you see on the screen right now is um the sort of existing space. Um it's really just the basement unfinished. And if you go to the next.
So, so hold on, can you please tell us a couple of things? Is this a one-family or a two-family?
It's a one-family.
It's a one-family, what, and tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in that basement?
Sure, so the floor-to-ceiling height is seven feet, one inches.
Okay, and then um uh tell us again what is proposed for the basement? What, what kind of use in the basement?
Yeah, we're proposing to use it as a family room and an office and to add a bathroom. And so we'll also be relocating um the different systems down there to make that happen, make that possible.
Okay, and how is it connected to the first floor?
What about the rest of the indemnification clause?
Oh, so there's a staircase at the front. If you scroll down a little bit, um you'll see right there, there's a staircase. um, you'll see right there, there's a staircase going up to the first floor. So we already have the existing staircase and a door that goes from our entryway of our home.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine. Uh, it, it is below grade, but, you know, as, as the proponent summarized, it, it looks like it's, it's an extension of their living space, not bedrooms. So I think, um, we should just maybe put a proviso for no bedrooms, but no questions on the scope.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant flyed their neighbors and earned several letters of support, and the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association voiced no opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board.
Our thing is just, I've been waiting.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Council, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record and support.
It's gonna be later on today.
Please, whoever has their mics unmuted, please mute yourself.
Madam Chair, I have no additional background.
Okay, uh, given that information, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso, no bedrooms be in the basement.
I'll second that, Eric.
Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-nine-nine-three-nine-three, twenty-nine St. John Street. This is to confirm, obviously, the one-family adding two-story bump-up to an existing conforming single-family residence, remodel the interior spaces. Proposed addition will exceed the outdoor floor ratio by two-hundred-and-twenty-three square feet. Violation Article fifty-five, section nine, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Kim and Will Messenger of twenty-nine St. John Street, and we're joined by our architect, Ed Forte.
Explain to us what you're proposing to do.
We're looking to put a small addition on this single-family house to make more livable space with a laundry and kitchen and storage on the first floor, sorry, laundry, bathroom and storage on the first floor and bathroom and walk-in closet on the second floor.
Okay, and that's a two-hundred-and-twenty-three, and this is, um, this is owner-occupied?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, uh, no questions, very straightforward.
Is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Covito here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant underwent an extensive community process, but had overwhelming support from Director Butters as well as the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council zoning subcommittee. I have three letters of support at this time. Additionally, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and defer the board judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, yeah, we do have those letters the mayor's office just spoke of.
Madam Chair, I have no written stance.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the last case at nine thirty, calling DOA one-one-five-six-nine-two-five, five to seventh Hooker Street. This is new construction of nine-for-sale condominium units and nine off-street, off-street parking spaces. The violation Article fifty-one, section eight, and nine family use is forbidden. Article fifty-one, section fifty-point-two, the conformity of the existing building alignment. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking and loading requirement, space is required, pose is nine. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking and loading. Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building has excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, section nine, section nine, front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, side yard is sufficient. And Article fifty-one, section nine, the ready yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Paul Rufo, I'm an attorney in Boston at Smith, Duggan, Doolin, Rufo, representing the ownership, Unicon Inc., Mr. Archaeolia. And with me is the architect on the project, Tanya Carrier. Uh, just briefly, this is nine, uh, for-sale condominiums on a, sort of a, uh, a peninsula or, uh, that exists at the corner of Royal Street and Hooker Street. It's surrounded on three sides by city streets. Empire Street is a paper street, meaning it's not paved, but it is there so that these combined lots will give us, uh, over eight thousand square feet. Um, and we've been to the neighborhood.
Mr. Rufo, while you, while you, while you have the screen, tell us about the proposal. We'll hear from everybody else about everything else, but you're here on, tell us about the, there's a lot of violations, talk us through it.
Right, so it's a two fam, it's a two-family five-thousand zone, so we're looking for nine units. Uh, so that's, we need relief for the, for the, for the use. The lot width complies, the frontage complies, uh, we've, we've pulled the property back. The FAR allowed is point-six, and we're looking for one-point-eight-seven, so we need relief for that. The height, we're matching the height of the condos next door, but stepping down, so it, the height allowed is forty, forty, I'm sorry, it's thirty-five feet, and we are, uh, at the highest point forty-two feet. Um, uh, the side yard complies on one side, um, but on the other side it doesn't, technically because Empire Street, we're too close to Empire Street, but as I say, Empire Street's a paper street, which is twenty feet wide. Uh, and then the parking, we propose nine spaces where sixteen spaces are required. We have six compact spaces and three full-size spaces. So that is, uh, I believe, a summary of, of the relief that we're requiring. And as I was saying, and Tanya can.
Can I just ask you, um, a couple more questions? Any roof decks being proposed?
Um, I guess I'd ask Tanya, there's a lot of outdoor space that she's designed into this to provide opportunities for the, the owners of the condos to have outdoor space. I'm not sure if they qualify as roof decks or not.
Or are they, or are they just unit decks?
Uh, yes, Tanya Carrier here from Tulsa Design. There's no roof deck on the, the high roof. Uh, there is a roof terrace on the third floor, which is off of the top-floor unit and private decks. So they're all private deck situations.
And please give us the breakdown on the units and the square footage.
Yep, yes, uh, there are eight two-bedroom units, including three of the two-bedroom units with a study, and there's one three-bedroom unit. Um, their unit sizes range for, from eight ninety square feet, uh, at the smallest to the largest being seventeen-hundred-and-thirty square feet. The average size is about, is over a thousand square feet, it's about twelve, thirteen-hundred square feet.
And what's the size of the three-bedroom?
Three-bedroom is, um, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight square feet. They're, they're designed to, obviously, to be attract family ownership.
And any affordable units?
No.
Okay, so, you know, we have this usual dilemma. There are two things that, that are an issue. First, this is a two-family sub-district, zoning sub-district. Um, and, you know, yes, you do have additional square footage on the lot, but not that much more. And the second issue is that we've seen a lot of projects come in at nine, um, nine units, so that there is, um, no meeting of, or no, um, no affordable unit being proposed. So tell us what your thoughts are on both of those.
The, um, I think in terms of the, the affordable unit, um, what they were, what the ownership was trying to design in was something that would be affordable with a small A to, uh, you know, by designing these smaller two-bedroom units, um, that would allow for, for homeownership. But in terms of the, uh, you know, meeting the, uh, Mayor Reno's directive, et cetera, um, just really the economics of the deal is what the decision was. And in terms of the lot itself, because it is surrounded on three sides, it's sort of a transitional, um, area between these row houses along, uh, Royal Street and to transition into the two-family neighborhood. Um, so, uh, we felt there was enough of a buffer, uh, especially with providing, uh, off-street parking between the condos, which are just immediately south of, of the building, and the, um, two-family neighborhood, which is just to the east. So that was, that was the thought process behind that.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plan, plans are, um, good. I think they, uh, they represent well. I think the, um, I feel like the scale on Royal is, is certainly a little bit more, uh, consistent with the, the sort of scale of that. I think the transitioning down to the two-family isn't quite getting there yet, in my opinion, but, um, I think in general, no real questions about the proposal. Seems as proponent is up on it.
Okay, any other, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I have a question on the drawing in the rendering. It, it looks like there's nothing on the roof, but in A-three-hundred elevation, if you scroll down to that, looks like there's a rather large headhouse or something that is not, uh, keep scrolling down. Uh, keep going, keep going, go to the elevation, but there we go.
Back one, oh.
Yeah, could, what, what is that big blocky thing on top of the roof? Cause it's not on the rendering.
Yes, Tanya Carrier in Tulsa Design, that is the stair to the roof, which is required by code for four-story.
And is, is there an elevator in there?
No, just the elevator penthouse. The elevator won't stop at the roof.
Okay, it seems sort of like a, uh, it seems large for, for a stairwell.
Uh, it, it could potentially be reduced by sloping down, um, with the, you know, slope of the stair, if that was a concern.
Yeah, okay, it's not, by the way, it's not, it's not, it doesn't show on the rendering, I guess, for your benefit. Um, but I think, I, I, this is, this would be with a reduced, uh, scale.
Okay, yes, we could do that.
Any other questions on the board?
Madam Kim, Mr. D'Amico, I believe he's had something to say.
Mr. D'Amico, go ahead.
Uh, yes, Bob D'Amico, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, B T V. And I just wanna make sure that the curb cut doesn't move, otherwise it'll take a permit from Public Works. Um, and, um, let's see, uh, um, that's about it. I just wanna make sure that the curb cut is, uh, you know, in, in place and is, uh, complies.
Thank you.
And I just want, I'll, I'll go on the record, you know, we've seen proposals like this, particularly in Brighton before with very large units that just happened to come in at nine. Um, you know, the massing of the building compared to what we usually see, you got large oversized units that could be made smaller and add more units and get some affordability in here. Um, so I just wanna go on record with that.
Um, also, you know, I, um, we just, anyway, actually, I'll reserve comment. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, it was pretty lengthy. Uh, the Mayor's Office conducted several abutters meetings, and the Alcett also held their own meetings as well with neighbors. Uh, they presented to the Alston Civic Association and the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. Throughout the process, we've heard a mix of opinions. Uh, some residents like that it's gonna bring owner-occupied units to a neighborhood that has a very low ratio. Um, other residents have expressed concerns about the proposed density as we're moving into North Alston on, uh, Hooker and Royal Street where there's smaller households, as well as concerns about, um, parking competition in that area as well. Um, the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association voted to support with VPDA Design Review and restrictions, that there'd be deep restrictions.
And sir, isn't this an, isn't this an Alston?
This is Alston, yeah.
The ACA voted to, what did ACA vote?
So ACA was split, so I believe the, uh, ZBA should have a letter on file. Uh, their membership couldn't reach a clear consensus. I guess it was split evenly, where, like I said, some residents liked that it was owner-occupied and be bringing owner, be bringing homeownership opportunities in the neighborhood. Others felt it was far too dense in this particular part of North Alston.
Thank you.
Good morning, this is Mara McCray from Council of Reden's office. The council would like to defer to the ACA on this project. Um, if the project is approved, the council would also like to ask for VPDA Design Review. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, yeah.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, everybody please mute. Everybody please mute, okay, go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have letters of, a few letters of support, and we do have letters of opposition as well, saying the project is too big for the area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune, there were about twenty letters in support, I'm sorry.
Mr. Rufo, hold on.
Okay, sorry.
The chair has the, anybody else who speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, we do have a few raised hands, I'll start with Richard. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Richard Rogers, thirty-seven to fifty-three Royal Street. I'm a Director Butter, lived in Lower Alston for twenty-five years. I'd just like to, just about two minutes, I wanna just urge the ZBA to decline all ten variances that are required, if allowed. It's gonna set a precedent in the neighborhood for being the tallest residential building in the two-family five-thousand zone. It'll create a frenzy of development applications and speculation in the neighborhood based on the new height precedent. Also, I believe that there's a lot of neighbors and residents that are not appearing at this hearing or may not have written to the ZBA. Because of the extensive community process, the developers actually made eight very attractive, specific promises at the meeting to make the development more viable. But on Friday, in an email to a limited group of people, they walked back six of those, those promises, basically, you know, revoking them. In their email, they shaved two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars from their first promise to offset the development with the deeded open space, saying that it's not economical, this is a quote, for a project of that size for the developer to spend that money to address the issue, and it should be the responsibility of the city to remedy. So they're talking here about the re-greening and the drainage, the parking and the traffic calming. That means that after they increase the density and the traffic and deliveries, they leave town with the profits and they leave behind that burden to the taxpayers and the neighbors and the city to deal with those issues that they created. So in a nutshell, after promising these attractive offsets to the neighbors, they revoked them, and a lot of those neighbors believed that they were coming. Thank you.
And please, anybody else who speak, give us new information?
Hi, Anthony, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Alston Civic Association. Uh, Madam Chair, it should come as no surprise that when we have new construction in an established residential neighborhood, uh, it, it very rarely is a unanimous, uh, decision. Uh, as was mentioned previously by the Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, the vote of the ACA was basically, uh, split down the middle with a slight majority opposing the project. And just to recap, uh, those people who, those members who support the project cite the nine homeownership opportunities. The proponent did make a commitment for one-hundred percent owner occupancy. They felt that the parking one-to-one ratio was adequate, uh, family-sized units. And this was a proponent that actually showed us their pro forma early in the process that justified what was at the time considered very reasonable, uh, sale prices for the units. And then on the other side, Madam Chair, those members that opposed the project, they cite the takedown of a two-family home, uh, height and density, uh, increased vehicular traffic was a concern, and they felt that the design was not conducive to assimilating into the existing neighborhood. So basically, uh, it was pretty much cut down the middle with a slight majority, uh, opposing the project.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I do have Catherine. Just want to request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi Catherine.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, you're Mr. Peggan. Are you on the home of the neighborhood?
Sorry, there's a lot of echo there. We cannot hear you. Hello? Okay. Yeah, there's some connectivity issues, Madam Chair, here. I have no additional raised hands.
Strack Hagan, are you on two, was she on two devices?
I don't think so. I don't see her name twice here. Really choppy. I have no additional raised hands.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion?
Would you like to make a motion for them?
Is there a second?
Second, I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The proposal has been denied.
Madam Chair, would you like to take a few moments while we go right to 10:30?
Let's go ahead because, and we'll take a break at 11:30, okay?
It's easy for you to say.
I'm sorry.
All right, call the first case for 10:30. Calling BOA 127-2471, 247 Saratoga Street. This is a change of art from a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. Violation Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, board members. It's Chairman Tobar Lamus, 247 Saratoga Street, East Boston, Mass.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
Yeah, so me and my dad, we own this single-family house in East Boston on Saratoga Street. We've lived there for the past 20 years. And before that, we lived on Harbor Street. But obviously, we're getting older and we'd like to stay in the house. But right now, it's only a single-family house. So what we'd like to do is build it to a two-family so that my parents can stay in one unit and then I and my brother could stay in the other unit. So we're turning a single-family into a two-family, but not taking the building down, just cutting the inside and doing the renovation from within.
Okay, is there any proposed living space in the basement?
Ah, there is.
Okay, so, and tell us about that basement space.
Yeah, so there's a two-bedroom and a bathroom and then just the washroom and dryer.
Okay, so I would recommend a deferral because this might be inadequately cited because the only citation here is for off-street parking and basement occupancy is forbidden in Eastie. And it looks like also the BPDA is talking about coastal flooding. And so all these, you know, raise a level of doubt with me whether this has been cited adequately. The violations have been cited adequately. So may I have a motion for deferral to give the applicant an opportunity to get this re-looked at by ISD?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
It'll have a date of July 12th at 11:30.
Okay.
Could I, sorry.
So applicant, please talk to the staff at ISD at the Board of Appeal office because we don't want to have you come back again and again because, so that you just clean everything up and deal with everything the first time around, okay?
Yeah, I just.
No, no, no. So please, so please talk to the staff, okay?
Yeah, it's just coming as a little bit of a surprise, just because.
Got it. No, got it. Got it completely. But we just, it's, it'll be to your long-term benefit. Okay?
Okay, because.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 127-8157-486 to 490 Medford Street. There's a companion case, BOA 129-9880, 117 Baldwin Street. Quote, 486, 490 Medford Street. This is construction of one ancillary off-street parking space to the total right side of 490 Medford Street house for one vehicle, of a motor vehicle for 117 Baldwin Street to be accessed via easement. A violation of Article 9, Section 2, not performing use change. Article 10, Section 1, the limitation of parking area. Article 62, Section 8, the dimensional regulation, insufficient open space. Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking, design maneuverability. And Article 62, Section 7, use of regulations, ancillary parking use is conditional. This is for 117 Baldwin Street, creating one ancillary off-street parking space for 117 Baldwin owner to be located on open space at 486, 490 Medford Street. A violation of Article 62, Section 7, use in regulations, ancillary parking is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
I do have a raised hand there. Second. Hi Ian, are you here to give, Ian or Mitch, here to contest, to weigh in on this?
Ian, is there a, can you hear me?
Yes. I'm sorry. Are you, are you speaking with me or someone else speaking? This is Mitch. Mitch, are you here for, yeah, I see your hand is raised. Are you here for 486 Medford?
I am.
So, Ms. Ambassador, it sounds like it's Ian who's here to present?
That's correct.
Hey, please put your name and address on the record.
Sure, aye. My name's Ian Erkart from Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish at 155 Seaport Boulevard in Boston, and I'm.
I just made him a panelist, so he cut out. Go ahead, Ian.
Okay, I'm back. Sorry about that. Hi, my name's Ian Erkart from Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish at 155 Seaport Boulevard in Boston. And I'm here representing the appellant, Jesse McDonald. And also with me is the appellant, Jesse McDonald, and counsel for the abutter, who will be using the space, Michael Cabral.
So tell us how this is supposed to work?
Okay, so the appellant built three adjoining townhouses fronting on Medford Street about a year or so ago. And associated with that zoning case, there was a lawsuit and a settlement within a butter to provide one off-street parking space adjacent to 486 to 490 Medford Street. So you'll, you'll see it there where it says parking easement for the benefit of 117 Baldwin Street. So we're seeking relief to create this parking space and allow ancillary parking for an abutter to use it.
And so that, the townhouses, how many, how many units in that townhouse?
Three.
So three, and what's, so that's at, that, which, so that's at Medford Street?
486 to 490 Medford Street are three adjoining townhouses.
And what's at 117 Baldwin Street?
The abutter, so.
How many units, though?
I believe that's a single-family.
That's a single-family? And so that, those townhouses needed to come to this board for approval?
Yes, correct.
Was it approved with any provisos?
No, I mean, maybe, you know, BRA Design Review, but nothing in addition.
Okay, tell us what plan we should look at to see how this is going to work? Was it the previous plan we were looking at?
That's helpful. I did, I did provide a rendering of a car entering the parking space. I'm not sure if that's in the package that you have in front of you. Doesn't, doesn't appear to me.
Mr. Robinson, can you please help out of our here?
Sure. Yeah, I don't have a rendering or anything of the, as the proponent is referencing. I mean, it does seem like there's a small area that's existing on the side.
Hold on, can I ask whoever's working the plan, can you hold on to this, please? Because it looks like, so, so the proposal, Mr. Erkart, is to have one space by the side of the building and then what? Just explain it to us. I'm having, I'm understanding it.
That's it, really. So there's a, there's an existing drive adjacent to the building which the abutter has a legal right to use. So he'll access via the existing curb cut, pull into the space and pull out the same way. So there will be a parking space with landscaping beside 486 to 490 Medford Street.
And where's the front door to these, to these townhouses? Is it choppy street?
Metford, fronting on Metford. These have.
So in essence, this would be, could possibly be front yard parking, then? And what's the dimension of that space?
It's 12 by 26.7 and it's largest in 25 on the other side.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
I mean, the plans depict it, so it is, it is a little bit of an odd residual space that looks like they're trying to utilize for a parking for, you're saying the parking is for the person on, at 117, which is around the corner?
That's correct.
Okay. So they park here, walk around on the public way around to their unit or their building down the street, I'll just say.
Yes, correct.
Um, so.
No questions.
Okay, so, okay, um.
There's already, there's already front yard garages on this, for these townhouses. So you're continuing that use of the front yard for accessing parking?
Yes, correct. I mean, so, so.
Yeah, there's, there's three garages that, underneath the three townhouses on Medford Street, right?
Correct. Each, each unit that was, townhouse unit that was created has existing parking underneath. First of all, parking.
And how do they, so they act, so in essence, what we're looking at on this, on this what's up on the screen, is inaccurate? Because then there are actually three curb cuts?
Yeah, there's a huge, yeah, there's three curb cuts. A huge one for two townhouses and then maybe for the third and then, and this new area.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Panado. Mr. D'Amico? Mr. D'Amico, please, can you get on the record, please?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Bob D'Amico, BTD. First of all, the curb cut does not align with the proposed parking space. And secondly, there is parking on this street, on this side, both sides, actually. So it results in a private parking space, which we are opposed to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Caitlin Stapleton with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to defer to the board on this matter. Our office held an abutters meeting on March 22nd where there was concerns regarding the parking spot being for a non-resident of the condo association as part of the easement that was expressed by abutters along with issues regarding safety. Questions were addressed by the applicant, but I received 11 letters of support and four letters of opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have those letters that the mayor spoke of. Mayor's office, not the mayor.
Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands. I'll start with Jesse. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, good morning, this is Jesse McDonald, 9 Belmont Street in Charlestown. My name is on this case here. I was one of the partners on the development team. And I just wanted to show, if I can, I can share that rendering.
No, 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 just verbally talk to us.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I just, I just want to, I guess, clarify if it helps to kind of scroll through there. I just want to maybe provide a little bit better kind of visual image for you guys to kind of conceptualize what we're trying to achieve here for the, for the owners at 117 Baldwin, who have the easement.
Okay, Ms. So can you hold on? Can I just hear from anybody else? And then I want to have the BPDA go on, on the record.
Michael, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Michael Cabral, 611 Main Street, Winchester. On behalf of Gary Kerr and Karen Kerr, abutters to the property and who would have access to this parking space in support, obviously, of the space itself, wanted to confirm as well that this is the result of litigation that allowed these three townhouses to be built in the first place. And also to state that all unit owners had notice of this easement that would be on the condominium property as well. Thank you. It does create, obviously, additional off-street space that would then create additional parking in the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommended denial without prejudice. One of our main reasons was insufficient open space, which, when you see the project, there's none where this parking was anyway. But we're in agreement with BTD. This would be either a massive curb cut or it's going to be the third curb cut in a row. And we're opposed to this, to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, anybody else if we haven't? Well, let me just see. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
May I, I just, for the sake of, you know, trying to keep this moving along with everyone's schedule, I just, I feel like maybe we've rolled through one section of that plan that doesn't adequately show what we're trying to achieve.
I honestly have to say I'm very disappointed with this presentation. I would expect that the technical people who are hired to present on behalf of the applicant would make sure that we and they were really presented with a clear narrative on what is proposed, clearly in context of what's happening. So given that information, I just need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I just, I want to try to show you an image. That's what I'm trying to do.
No, okay.
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, motion does not carry. May I have another motion?
Didn't Sherry just second it?
I seconded it, yeah.
Sherry, did you second that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, you know, let's, let's look for another proposal from you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 130-6634-40-Union Park. This is a full gut demolition, including normal work. Violations Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. Article 64, Section 9, excessive FAR, the basement dormer increase. Article 64, Section 34, restricted roof structure regulations, reconfiguration of the roof profile and setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCastla, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. With me are the homeowners, who will be the end users of this building after the renovation project, Caitlin McGovern and her husband Connor Piggott. Our architects are Mellos and Palladino. And the contractor is Holland &amp; Sun Construction Company. There is a G-Cod conditionally used permit as the first item on the refusal letter, Madam Chair.
Can you please go to the other, other, please describe what's being proposed and tell us about the violations?
Yes, there should be on record, as there is uploaded into the ISD portal, the revised plans that showed a corrected refusal letter eliminating the FAR violation, leaving the sole item for consideration, a conditionally used permit for the restricted roof structure, which is a dormer on the top floor in the rear of the property with a small roof deck thereon accessed by hatch.
Tell us about the basement living?
So the basement is existing living space that has always been there. It is a full walkout in the back. And if we scroll down to the elevations, you'll see that what is proposed for the lower level is a full set of windows, floor to ceiling. And the basement will be, these are existing a little bit further. will be, these are existing a little bit further. These are the proposed floor plans. Next slide will be the elevation. Sorry, keep going. Right, stop here. Oh, so, no. The garden level floor plan is, the next slide, please. No, back, sorry, the other direction. Yes, stop right here. Garden level plan on the left-hand side shows a living area in the rear of the building, which, as I mentioned, is a full walkout and an exercise room, a half bath, and a small bedroom in the front with a window well in the front yard that's existing. And the ceiling height is eight-four, and the distance from the basement floor to the lower sill in that egress window is thirty inches.
And, and this is a single family? So, okay, so tell us about that roof deck.
If we could scroll ahead to an elevation. The roof deck is here, two hundred thirty-eight square feet at the rear of the building on the public alley, on top of what is proposed as the new dormer accessed by a hatch. If you scroll ahead just a bit more, there's an elevation as well showing the, right there on the right, is the proposed dormer with the roof deck on the top. If you just scroll the screen down a little bit more, you'll see that there are large windows on the lowest level. That's the full walkout condition that leads to the rear patio of the yard.
Okay. Christian, you, please tell us about G-Cod.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. Christian Seminelli, Boston Brownwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have those letters as well.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think, no questions. It's as advertised, fairly simple. All the addition work is toward the rear as well in terms of the back of the building. So, no questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Chris Ili from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to defer to the board on this matter. We held a Butters meeting in March of 2022, where full support was shown by the Butters as well as Union Partnership. Thank you.
Good morning, Maran Ode, chair members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President's Flink's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support. We also received nine letters of support on this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have those letters of support to Mayor's office vocal.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thanks.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling VOA 130-8841-1 Beacon Street. This is to remove the revisal for this petitioner only, for takeout use 36A, a new restaurant to be built out as new Solanke Greek restaurant. Violation Article 6, Section 4, remove the other conditions necessary for protection. Name and address for the record, please.
I do see a raise hand. One second. Jonathan Mendez, sorry, is that, are you here for this proposal?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, yes, Jonathan Mendez, Chief Operating Officer, Solanke Greek.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Um, I believe there is a zoning, zoning issue where there, it does not permit takeout of any kind at this location. We are going into a second generation restaurant space that used to be the Capery Grill on the corner of, I believe it's Tremont, actually don't know the cross street, but it's at one beacon, that tower right there. It's a freestanding little building there that was kind of iconic for a very long time. We are just, we're essentially the exact same type of restaurant, we're fast casual restaurant. Think of us kind of as a Greek Chipotle.
And, I'm sorry, so you have the, who, who will be running this, this restaurant?
Uh, we will. It's, it's our company. This is our fourth location.
Your fourth location in the city of Boston?
Uh, second in the city of Boston, and the other two are in the city of Cambridge.
And you have experience with takeout?
Uh, yes, correct. We've been in business since 2016.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good. I know this space well. I did Capery back in the day, so appreciate the challenges ahead of them in this space. So good luck with that. No questions on the proposed scope.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. We worked with the applicant to do some neighborhood outreach, and we reached out to the Beacon Hill Civic Association, who doesn't really oversee this jurisdiction in Beacon Hill. So at this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Good morning, Maran Ode, chair members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President's Flink's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with typical takeout license, provisos and for this applicant only.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling VOA 124-4554-23, Eifley Road. This is to add a driveway adjacent to their home. The violation is Article 55, Section 40, R Street parking is insufficient, and Article 55, Section 9, the side yard, is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
All right, let me see if this question is on. Okay, one second. Jeff, I sent the request to unmute you. Hi, Jeff, can you hear us? What's he on? Yeah, I can hear you now. Yep, I saw you, but you're on a couple of different cards.
Jeffrey Messeray, 23 Eifley Road, apartment two, Jamaica Plain, Mass. I'm representing the owner of the home, Lorena Messeray, my mother.
Okay, so tell us, is this a one-family or a two-family?
This is actually a three-family home.
This is a three-family? And tell us how you are proposing to add the driveway?
Um, so we already have a driveway. When my father bought the home back in, I believe it was nineteen sixty-two, the driveway space already existed. However, there's no curb cut. So we would just like to be able to make a curb cut so that my mother and my aunt, who's elderly, can access the driveway, since there's no street parking anymore.
And, and is there street parking on this side of the street? Or no street parking at all?
No, so there's street parking on both sides. However, it fills up, ever since they built forty-two, uh, hundred Washington Street, all the street parking is occupied by six p.m. My mother and my aunt both work late nights, so when they come, they often have to park two or three blocks away from the house.
Okay. Okay, um. Yep, the ripple effects of, okay. So, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans show the condition. It's, it's very tight. I think it, its dimension is eight foot six clear at the, at the house, which I think would be limited. There, there is retaining walls on both sides of the driveway, and that is kind of there, and a gate, but there's no curb cut.
Okay. Mr. D'Amico?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, lady, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I feel bad, but the, the plan doesn't work. It's, it's much too narrow, and there might be difficulty for maneuverability in, as well as out. And I, as much as I feel bad, I'd have to request denial.
If I, if I may, if I may, if I may speak, the driveway is very big. I don't think the, the plans do the justification, but you can fit a Hummer in that driveway very easily. We, we went through the approval process.
No, 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 that's, you know, I'm gonna say, it's gonna, it's fine if you can fit a Hummer in, but can you get a person in and out of the Hummer?
Very easily. If you look at the Google Images, the driveway is very big. We had an approval by the JP zoning committee and.
No, no, no. The box stops with us, and so we need to really know, and, and we rely on Mr. D'Amico. If you submit us plans with dimensions, that's what we need to go with.
I think the, the, just for clarification purposes, I think additionally, the problem is we don't allow front yard parking. So there's not, there is plenty of space in the front yard, but I don't, I don't think there's enough space as you move the car into next to the building to allow for the size. So I understand what the proponent's saying, but I think the problem is we can't allow you to park in the front yard. That's not, that's not allowed. So.
But, but, no, hold on, hold on, Mr. Messeray. The question is, though, it looks like this driveway is limited by two retaining walls. And so that's why I'm just wondering if this is at all doable for a homeowner who's been there a long time and who's now impacted by, by, you know, actions, actions of approval of the other project. And I, I just toss it up. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I mean, looking at Google Maps, it look, this driveway extends all the way to the rear of the building. You obviously can't tell what the width dimensions are on Google Maps, but it looks like it's a, it's a usable driveway. I, it's, I have to assume the dimensions that were given are correct, but I don't know.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, all, all they're looking for is a curb cut. They're not looking for, for the, the driveway's existing condition.
Yep, okay. Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Coadle here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Butters meeting was facilitated by our office on October 21st, 2021, with community support from neighborhood associations and director Butters. Additionally, this poll will receive support from the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association, the Brookside Neighborhood Association, and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council's zoning subcommittee. At this time, I don't have any letters of opposition. Still, in all, the mayor's office would like to on record and defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solomon, City Council, Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Knowing of no, knowing opposition, the council would like to go on record and support.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review to see if we can make sure there's no front yard parking.
Is there a second?
Um, and a second, like curb cut, minimum curb cut.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck. Um, let's see, it's eleven thirty. Mr. Fortune?
Holding it to eleven thirty, Madam Chair.
Uh, shall we do deferrals and then take a break?
Sure, we can do that. I'm gonna call the eleven thirty for rediscussions. Any deferrals or withdrawals? Can you give me the address, please?
Twenty Hinckley Street?
Thank you. For the record, calling VOA 125-8638, twenty Hinckley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Tuscana with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. We are seeking an administrative deferral. At the last hearing, we did get our plans in immediately. We were notified by the ZBA board that, our secretary, that they did not get the refusal letter back in time and had to be ties with correct and new violation. So we would seek an administrative deferral.
Is there a motion?
Uh, motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
We'll have a date of July 12th at eleven thirty.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the rediscussions at eleven thirty?
Okay, the meeting, the board meeting is now adjourned until eleven fifty.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
On an entire basement. Bedrooms are everywhere. And as you see, you can see, uh, egress windows for those bedrooms and other, um, separate entrances for the basement unit.
Um, and what's the floor to sill height?
Uh, that is, I don't have that with me, but that is all I know is over eight feet.
Floor to sill height, to window sill height?
Oh, there, the front window sill height is gonna be forty, um, thirty, thirty-eight or forty, between thirty-eight and forty inches.
Okay, and then, um, where, where is, is there a driveway on this property?
There is a driveway on this side and on the right side of the house, if we are in front of the house. There is a driveway, a long driveway. And, uh, and we have a lot of space on the back, in the backyard. Um, or to create, you know, like, uh, six, six, six cars on on the back away. And, uh, on the side of the house, there are about three cars that we can see.
Okay, and the bedrooms, do the window, the windows, the, um, open onto the driveway or where do they open onto?
On the opposite side.
Okay. Um, Mr. Robinson, it's not yet one, but I'm gonna ask your help on this. How are the plans?
Um, the, you know, I think this is, we're running into a similar issue with, that we've had. The height in the basement's dimensioned as seven feet. Um, it does show two foot six, but they are basically showing area wells, um, for the bedroom units. And there's no really other windows, uh, available to the natural light for this unit below grade.
And we have to recognize that in this zoning district, the, the, um, let's see, the dwelling unit is a forbidden use in the basement. And in addition, the applicant is asking, even though there are already two units, um, for variance from the parking requirement.
Correct.
Okay, um, let's just see, and it's two means of egress and everything?
They do have the two means of egress covered, um, because they're adding a stair to the left side front, um, to gain access to this as a separate unit.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm a little confused about the floor to ceiling height. Um, the applicant apparently had stated that it was eight feet. And Mr. Robinson said it was seven foot one shown in the drawings. And if he wants to turn this from a two to a three family, the code requires that there be a minimum of seven foot six. So at least if we are saying that the plans are accurate, this is not code compliant.
Right.
Okay.
This looks like relatively new construction. It probably was before us before.
Uh, Tom, can you confirm whether this project was before this board?
Hi, Madam Chair, I'm looking into it. I'll let you know when I find any records.
Thank you. Any other questions before, uh, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Uh, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Dante Peoples from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office elected to first the board on this matter. The applicant had met with the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association on February 17th, where residents had shown concerns around the property being purchased through the Neighborhood Homes Initiative as there may be program or deed restrictions on the property. However, the property seemed to have been purchased through the program at market rate. Um, there were also issues around, concerns around parking, off street parking aspect of the project. Um, there was also a meeting run by, a Butters meeting run by the Office of Neighborhood Services on March 21st, 2022, where the port was owned by a Butters, but there was also parking concerned, um, in regards to the small lot size and the driveway that we spoke about. Um, the mayor's office did receive a support petition with names, a support petition with names of Butters that the applicant submitted to the board, um, as well as I sent them to the board, um, as well as an, um, another letter of support from another Butters, director Butters. Um, the Greater Matter Pan Neighborhood Council had opposed proposal and sent in a letter to the board, um, citing that they don't feel the drawings, uh, reflect what is being proposed. And as they may be from 2017, so it may not be accurate. Uh, they also feel that the applicant should apply through the additional dwelling unit program instead of filing for a variance. And wanted to state that they, um, that the Neighborhood Council is opposed to variances for basement units. Um, I don't believe the Woodrow Ave, the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association sent in a letter, but they do echo the sentiments of, um, concerns of some Butters as well as the Greater Matter Pan Neighborhood Council. Again, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the, defer to the board on this matter. Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, this is Tom. Uh, it looks like the, the property was built in 2017 as of rights of the company board.
Thank you.
Was it part of the Neighborhood Homes Initiative?
Now, hold on, Mr. Olick, let's just find out if anybody else, um, wants to give a testimony?
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, we do, so I'm calling from the District 4 City Council's office. Um, I did want to just speak and say that we are not supporting this project due to all the various.
You're muted, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the reminder. The meeting for, the Board of Appeal meeting for May 10th is back in session. Mr. Portman?
I call the continuation of the 1030 cases. Calling case BOA 131050729, I'm sorry. Case BOA 1243853, 7A to 7B Jones Avenue. This is a finished basement. There's two new bedrooms in the unit. And change of occupancy from a two to three family dwelling. The violation is Article 60, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, the usual open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 60-9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 8, the dwelling unit is forbidden in the basement. And Article 60, Section 37, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Nelson Santos, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, good morning, everyone. Yeah, they only looking for, looking to, you know, turn that basement, unfinished basement, into a two-bedroom, uh, whatever it's like, uh, with, with, you know, on the joint. And very much, is a second, is a two-family house with a really nice high basement unfinished. That is why they are looking for.
Okay, so tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in that basement. Tell us about the floor-to-ceil height in the bedrooms. And tell us about how, if utilities are separated.
Yeah, all the utilities gonna be separated, are gonna be, we're locating the existing ones now, and they're gonna be by the back of the unit, um, on the basement. The ceiling height, all the ceiling height, I don't have that exactly with me, but it's over eight feet. On an entire basement. Bedrooms are everywhere. And as you see, you can see, uh, egress windows for those bedrooms and other, um, separate entrances for the basement unit.
Um, and what's the floor-to-ceil height?
Uh, that is, I don't have that with me, but that is all, I know it's over eight feet.
Floor-to-ceil height, window-ceil height?
Oh, there, the front window-ceil height's gonna be forty, um, thirty, thirty-eight or forty, between thirty-eight and forty inches.
Okay, and then, um, where, where is, is there a driveway on this property?
There is a driveway on this side, and on the right side of the house, if we are in front of the house, there is a driveway, a long driveway. And, uh, and we have a lot of space on the back, in the backyard. Or to create, you know, like, uh, six, six, six cars on, on the back away. And, uh, on the side of the house, another three cars that we can see.
Okay, and the bedrooms, do the window, the windows, the, um, open onto the driveway? Or where do they open onto?
On our opposite side.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, it's not yet one, but I'm gonna ask your help on this. How are the plans?
The, the, you know, I think this is, we're running into a similar issue with, that we've had. The height in the basement's dimensioned as seven feet. It does show two foot six, but they are basically showing area wells for the bedroom units. And there's no really other windows available to the natural light for this unit below grade.
And we have to recognize that in this zoning district, the, the, um, let's see, the dwelling unit is a forbidden use in the basement. And in addition, the applicant is asking, even though there are already two units, for variance from the parking requirement.
Correct.
Okay, um, let's just, and it's two means of egress and everything?
They do have the two means of egress covered, um, because they're adding a stair to the left-side front, to gain access to this as a separate unit.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm a little confused about the floor-to-ceiling height. The applicant apparently had stated that it was eight feet. And Mr. Robinson said it was seven foot one, shown in the drawings. And if he wants to turn this from a two to a three family, the code requires that there be a minimum of seven foot six. So at least if we are saying that the plans are accurate, this is not code compliant.
Right.
This looks like relatively new construction. It probably was before us before.
Uh, Tom, can you confirm whether this project was before this board?
Hi, Madam Chair, I'm looking into it. I'll let you know when I find any records.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dante Peoples from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office elected to first the board on this matter. The applicant had met with the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association on February 17th, where residents had shown concerns around the property being purchased through the Neighborhood Homes Initiative, as there may be program or deed restrictions on the property. However, the property seemed to have been purchased through the program at market rate. There were also issues around, concerns around parking, dark sheet parking aspect of the project. There was also a meeting run by, a Nubotis meeting run by the Office of Neighborhood Services on March 21st, 2022, where the port was owned by Nubota, but there was also parking concerned in regards to the small lot size and the driveway that we spoke about. The Mayor's Office did receive a support petition with names, a support petition with names of Nubotis that the applicant submitted to the board, as well as I sent over to the board, as well as another letter of support from another butter, Director Butter. The Greater Matter Pan Neighborhood Council had opposed proposal and sent in a letter to the board, citing that they don't feel the drawings reflect what is being proposed, and as they may be from 2017, so it may not be accurate. They also feel that the applicant should apply through the additional dwelling unit program instead of filing for a variance, and wanted to state that they, that the Neighborhood Council is opposed to variances for basement units. I don't believe the Woodrow Ave, the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association sent in a letter, but they do echo the sentiments of, on concern of some of Butters, as well as the Greater Matter Pan Neighborhood Council. Again, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the, defer to the board on this matter. Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, this is Tom. Looks like the, the property was built in 2017, as of rights of the court board.
Thank you.
Was it part of the Neighborhood Homes Initiative?
Now, hold on, Mr. Olick, let's just find out if anybody else, um, wants to give a testimony?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, we do Swag, calling from the District 4 City Council's office. I did want to just speak and say that we are not in support of this project due to all the various reasons unknown. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, have the, have the hands.
Thank you, Mr. Olick, go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering whether, it says, the, the issue was raised about whether it's part of the Neighborhood Homes Initiative, whether there are deed restrictions.
Uh, Mr. Olick, this is Tom. According to the permit application, it is a part of the Neighborhood Homes Initiative, but I, I don't know of any deed restrictions from the property. I'm gonna look that up in the registry.
So neighborhood homes programs comes with their pre, pre-designed building.
Yeah.
Right? And those don't look very, um, well, so anyway, so, uh, and they are already constructed and proposed to provide income to the homeowner for, to provide income to the homeowner. So I don't know what this means, trying to move these from two to three families, plus the basement use. Okay, so given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, it's been denied. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 131050729, Hamilton Street. Is a four-story building designed for seniors aged 62 and older. First floor with community room, lobby, game room, management office, meeting space total over a thousand square feet. One bicycle space per two units indoors on the ground level. One motor vehicle space for three, per three units in the garage and building total of 36. The violation is Article 65, Section 8, elderly housing use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 42, conforming with existing billing alignment. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the billing height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the billing height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, sorry, I have two raised hands here. Sean, Ashley, are you on for this case?
Sean Brier, sorry, needed to unmute myself, thank you.
Are you, okay, are you here for this proposal?
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Jessica, Madam Chair. For the record, Attorney Sean Brier of the Law Firm of Hackett Feinberg, 155 Federal Street, Boston, appearing before you on behalf of the project sponsor, Vietnamese American Initiative for Development, Inc. With me on the panel this morning is Eric Felenger, the Director of Real Estate Development for Viet Aid, as well as our project architects, Cliff Homer and Amelia Maman, both of Davis Square Architects. Purpose of this appeal is to seek zoning relief for the development of three parcels located in the Dorchester neighborhood, the SF 6,000 sub-district.
I'm sorry, what was, what's the zoning district?
SF 6,000.
I'm sorry?
SF 6,000.
Okay.
Madam Chair, 2F, 2F.
2F, 2F, sorry.
Okay, sorry, 2F 6,000.
I apologize.
Yes, and what's the size of the, the lot, the total lot size?
Total lot will be 19,359 square feet.
Okay, go ahead, go, sorry, go ahead with your presentation.
No problem. Three parcels of 25 Hamilton, 29 Hamilton, and 33 Hamilton. Again, aggregate size 19,359 square feet. Viet Aid is a nonprofit developer with a mission to build strong, vibrant, and diverse communities in Dorchester.
So, 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 Counselor, Counselor, can you go ahead just and tell us about the proposal? Because the bulk of us know about Viet Aid, and so we just need to understand this proposal.
No problem. The proposal is to develop, to redevelop the site into much-needed affordable housing consisting of 36 one-bedroom residential apartments for seniors 62 and older. There will be associated community room, lobby, game room, management office, and meeting space, as well as an outdoor courtyard, 2,000 square feet, and 13 off-street parking spaces located on the ground level underneath the building. The project's construction does require some, a set of zoning relief from this board, including elderly housing being a forbidden use. The application of conformity with the existing building alignment. The applicant is seeking a variance to demolish the existing building and construct a new four-story building, which does not comply with the existing building alignment. We have excessive floor ratio of 1.9. There's excessive building height and building stories and insufficient rear yard. The proposal, uh...
So let's, let's, let's just back up for a minute. So how large are the proposed units?
Each unit, um, defer that question to Eric and/or Davis Square to answer the size of each particular unit.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Eric Felenger, Viet Aid. The project is funded through, in part, through the Boston Mayor's Office of Housing, and we are meeting their minimum size requirements of, I believe it's at least 610 square feet per one-bedroom unit.
610 square feet, okay. And are these all going to be affordable, or is there a certain percentage that's gonna be affordable?
They are 100% affordable. Twenty of the units will be restricted to 60% AMI and below, seven of them to 50% AMI, and the remaining nine at 30% AMI.
So it's 60 to 30% AMI?
That is correct.
Okay, and tell us about, um, when your residence age in place, what is the drop-off pickup point for, for this building?
I, thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there an off-street proposal?
There is off-street. We are designing the subsurface parking garage to accommodate an SSTV van, and there will be elevator access to that level. There will also be a parking space we intend to work with Boston Traffic to sign the space on-street immediately in front of the building as a 15-minute space, so that an SSTV van may stop there to make pickups conveniently.
And how many staff people are you anticipating in this building?
We anticipate perhaps one full-time staff at the most. But most of the community services will be delivered on, you know, an as-needed basis with providers able to park below the building or on-street.
Okay, so the 13 spaces are both for residents and for, um, for residents and for, um, for staff?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, and tell us, so there's one bicycle unit, one bicycle space per two units, and one garage space for, for three units?
That's correct.
Okay, any roof deck proposed?
No, ma'am.
No, okay, um...
But as you'll see in the renderings, we have a substantial amount of the front yard dedicated as outdoor space for use by the residents.
You had said the 2,000 square feet, right?
Uh, approximately.
Yeah, okay, um, and then how many of these units are handicapped?
Cliff or Amelia, can you confirm?
This is Cliff Homer, I'm the Principal of Davis Square Architects. We're exceeding MAAB requirements and in fact exceeding MOH requirements. Four of the units, which is 11% of the units, will be Group II level units. All of the other units in the building will be Group I adaptable units.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think it's a nice plan, fits in pretty nicely. The slope of the site is, I think, well, sort of taken care of in terms of the front yard courtyard, so, and the proposal is as proponents have submitted and with no roof deck, so no, no real questions. It, it looks like a nice proposal.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one question. I mean, it certainly seems like a worthy proposal. It seems a little bit out of context with the neighborhood. I look, looking at Google Maps at Hamilton Street, and it's mostly two and three-family, two and three-decker, two and three-family homes. This would be a significantly different use of the space from what I can tell, and we'd just like to hear the proponent talk about that.
Sure, happy to. We acknowledge that point. We do think that the building fits in extremely nicely with the existing architecture, despite, as you point out, the, um, the difference in scope. We have done an extensive community meeting process. We've had four of our own meetings, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, please answer Mr. Olick's question about contact, context.
Certainly, well, in terms of neighborhood support, we have brought that point to the neighbors, and they are accepting of it. In terms of the building itself, let me hand it back to Cliff to discuss that.
I, thank you very much for that comment. I wanted to point out a few things about the existing context. It, it is indeed true that there are many, many, three families there, but it is important to note that most of those three families, if not all of them, do have stairways leading up to their entry level and floor-to-floor heights that are equal or greater than our building. So in fact, the, the height of our building really isn't that much greater than context.
How much, sorry, how much greater is it?
Well, we're, they, we're facing the street that you can see in the rendering to the left, that's at 43 feet, our top, our, our highest, our roof level on the street is 43 feet. Nearby buildings, they, they aren't the same, but they range anywhere from 35 to 40 feet once you count the stairways up into the, uh, up until the entry level. I did, I think the important thing to understand about the massing was that we put the, the biggest massing of the building is furthest away from the street. So the slope of, from Hamilton, it goes down towards the south, where we have a lot of space and distance from neighbors. So it's an L-shaped building that really just shows the, the small elevation, immediately facing the street, and then the taller part, because of the slope, is in the back, minimizing its impact. So we did work hard with both BPDA and MOH to develop this massing that we think is really minimally impactful. I would also point out that when you do, Google Earth is a great tool for looking at this, that the actual intensity of use of the site, while we are asking for a variance for FAR, most of the surrounding sites are very small sites with very little distance between the buildings with existing FARs that often are well above 1.9.
What is your, this proposed, um, FAR?
I, I don't remember, frankly, so 1.9. 1.9.
Okay.
Just like to applaud the, the increase in affordable housing, which is much needed in the city and, and the nice use of open space. We don't see that typically.
And I think the next question is, I know this is Viet, Viet Aid development, is it going to be open to the public in general?
Of course, ma'am, through the typical Boston Fair Housing managed lottery process for affordable units.
Okay. Let's see, any more questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record and state that the applicant has done a couple different community meetings, as well as met with the Neighborhood Association. They have support from the Neighborhood Association. Some of Butters were concerned around density. At this time, our office would like to defer any comments to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Council, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Council to go on record in support.
Hello, Madam Chair. Okay. Okay. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Izzy Slater, and I'm here on behalf of City Councilor Atlard Husey Lee Chen. Our office would like to go on record in support of the project.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Rooney, Mayor's Office of Housing, 12 Channel Street, Boston. MOH is in full support of this affordable senior housing project. Thank you.
Mr. Rooney, I'd be surprised if you weren't.
We put our money where our mouths are.
Okay, let's, let's move in.
Yep, go ahead, Sean, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
That, that was Sean Brier asking to be...
Oh, okay. Okay, oh, sorry, okay, As, Ashley, you've been unmuted?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Asa Ersem from Boston City Councilor at Large Julia Mahia's office, and we would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
And Davida, you've been unmuted?
Madam, if I may, Davida Andelman.
Here we go.
Are you there, great?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just late for another meeting. Davida Andelman, 94 Clarkson Street. I live actually a block and a half away from this project. I'm Chair of the Greater Boon Geneva Neighborhood Association. Viet Aid has gone above and beyond what they needed to do in terms of engaging the community. All the concerns, interests, and recommendations of the community have been taken into consideration and have been respected, so we hope you will support this project. Thank you very much.
I have no additional, oops, I have all these things on the panel aside. Oh, go ahead, Minor.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Perez representing the Carpenter's Union. On behalf of hundreds of our members who live in Dorchester, I want to go on record in support.
Okay. And Rochelle?
Hi, y'all, Rochelle St. Louis State Representative, Liz Miranda's office. Our office, our office would like to go on record in full support of the project, and we have also offered a letter of support as well.
Thank you. And PJ?
I, Bejo Swagu from District 4 City Councilor, Brian Morales' office. The office would like to go on record giving its full support for this project. Thank you.
Excellent. I was just having some technical difficulties, so I did not see the proposed building. Does, does it need design review?
Yes, ma'am, we will be engaged with...
No, 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 I'm, I'm asking the board members, sorry.
Yeah, but I think it, it will go through its final design review, yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a BPDA design review?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so you're all set with that, advisor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1291466, 1644 Dorchester Avenue. This is a modestly existant structure, like a three-story, eight-unit residential building with garage and front and side roof decks. The violation, Article 65, Section 38, specific design requirements, the street wall continuity in certain sub-districts. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Eddie O'Driscoll with respect to the property. My client and the project architect, Tim Johnson, are here with us today. What is being proposed is the replacement of an existing two-and-a-half-story building with a new three-story building containing eight residential units. The existing building has been used for different purposes over the years, including a funeral home, a church, and as a two-family dwelling. The lot size is 9,304 square feet, and it's located in a multifamily residential local services zoning district. The ground floor here would consist of a garage for 10 vehicles, which meets code requirements. It would also include the main building entrance on Dorchester Avenue. The garage entrance for an existing curb cut will be reconfigured in accordance with city regulations as to size, as well as a bicycle room, mailroom, unit storage, three-stop elevator, elevated conforms accessibility requirements, and utility rooms. The second and third floors would each contain four two-bedroom units ranging in size from 1,070 to 1,228 square feet. The roof would feature four centrally located 12-by-12 roof decks. The roof would feature four centrally located twelve-by-twelve roof decks, one for each of the third floor units. Access would be provided by hatch. With respect to the zoning, Madam Chair, members, the building is nearly zoning compliant. The zoning refusal letter cites three violations. There is a violation for excessive floor area ratio. The maximum FAR here is one. What is being proposed is an FAR of one point zero two nine. So that's twenty-nine one thousandths above the maximum FAR of one. Another violation is for street wall continuity. Because this is an MFRLS zoning sub-district, the code would actually require the building to have less of a front yard setback in order to be in alignment with the prevailing alignment in the street, which is set by the commercial building a block away at the corner of Center Street. Our client believes it is much more appropriate to have a generous front yard setback, such as what is being proposed. Finally, there is a violation for insufficient rear yard setback. The rear setback requirement here is thirty feet, while the proposed setback varies from a minimum of six feet at two points where the building jogs, but twelve to eighteen feet for much of the rest of the building. And I would note for the record that the setback of the existing building at its nearest point to the rear lot line is also approximately six feet. With that, Madam Chair, we'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
So I understand that the, the existing building may be closer to the property line, however, it's a less impactful building. What is, is that the best that the applicant can do? How, what is the distance between the furthest rear yard line and the abutting property?
I'll ask Tim Johnson if he has a measurement on the abutting building in the rear. Tim, do you have a distance for that? Not the distance, of course, to this rear property line, but to the building in the back, I'd say.
Yes, thank you, George. Madam Chair, Tim Johnson, the project architect. These would be two buildings directly behind us on Elm Lawn Street, number eight and number ten, who we have worked closely with. Their rear yard setbacks, although I don't have an exact dimension, Madam Chair, I am going to estimate approximately ten to twelve feet to their rear, portion of their rear of their house.
So in total, then, with your six to twelve feet and their twelve feet, there should be a decent amount of separation, then?
Yes, Madam Chair. Also, we worked closely with the rear abutters. We generated shadow studies, and with the proposed building facing.
No, I get it, I get it. My concern is that, you know, how are we impacting their rights in the future? You know, by, by having these buildings so close to the property line? Or this proposed building so close to property line?
And that's why we jogged the rear of the house building, Madam Chair, so we wouldn't have one straight facade facing the rear abutters.
And how is this design contextual for Dorchester Ave?
Well firstly, mostly it's three stories. The majority of the buildings along this area are three-story buildings. Also, the fenestration, all the windows will be proportioned at a two-to-one ratio. We'll be using a very standard exterior siding, which is clapboard. We also are showing bay windows, which are predominant along this side of, this stretch of Dorchester Ave. And the main entry area is recessed with front decks supported by columns posting all the way down to the ground. Again, another feature of the triple deckers and the Second Empire Victorian buildings along this street section.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Secretary here. I got a question for Mr. Marancy. Was this project before, as before?
Mr. Fortune, George Marancy speaking. There was a larger project, a nine-unit project, that was denied without prejudice by the board in April of twenty twenty-one. I was not involved in that project, and it was a different applicant.
Okay, it was, it looked familiar. That's like, obviously fresh on my mind. Thank you.
Yes. And Mr. Johnson, are the bays on the property or over the sidewalk?
No, Madam Chair, the bays are on the property.
Excellent, okay. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are, are fine. They're good. I, I think it's, it is consistent with the street. Obviously, it's a little bit more of a contemporary take. I do appreciate the bays and the decks on the front, as you faced Dorchester Avenue. And I think, based on what it looks like, they're trying to, you know, mitigate any impact on the rear abutters to the best of their ability. So I, in terms of the proposal, I really don't have any other questions. What's being proposed?
Thank you. Is this proposed to be a lead building or lead certified in any way?
This is Tim Johnson again. No, ma'am, this won't be lead certified. However, it will be one hundred percent electrified for heating, cooling, and cooking. There will be no fossil fuels coming into this building. Of course, it will be built to the stretch energy code, which is twenty percent more energy efficient than current code.
Can you speak to the landscaping on this site?
The landscaping, we have firstly with the rear abutters, working with fencing in the rear and planting deciduous trees strategically placed along the rear of the property. We do not have a landscape plan per se, but we hope to generate one during BPDA design review. I hope I answered your question.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting for the project on March first. Some neighbors expressed concern and feedbacks, privacy and shade, for which the proponent performed a shadow study. Martin Area Civic Association voted in support of the proposal. However, some immediate abutters have since changed their minds. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Do you have any idea what, what caused that, the change of heart with the abutters?
From my understanding, it was a couple of the most immediate abutters expressing some concern after the vote with density and with sort of effect on their view and the shadow study. But that's kind of, the civic association pretty much followed suit with what that immediate abutters, what those couple of immediate abutters wanted. And since those few folks changed their minds, you know, that's kind of what happened there.
Got it, okay. Anybody else to speak on this project?
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have letters of opposition.
And, and Mr. Fortune, what is the opposition?
They were opposed to the project when it was nine units. They're still opposed to it as a project, as an eight unit.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I do have two raised hands. Second, start with Ethel. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Ethel. Okay.
This is.
Doug.
Hello?
Hi, Doug. Yep, can you state your name and address for the record, Doug?
Yes, my name's Doug Hurley. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Agnes B. Hurley, seventy-nine years old, that doesn't understand the internet, at Fifteen Penelope Street, which is about eight homes away from this project.
And is in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm very familiar with this project. I'm the former president of the Saint Max Area Civic Association. You know, you guys were nice enough to decline this project as a nine-unit project. Not much has changed since, one less project. The owner immediately started to try to gain support after your denial in the past, and he intends to sell this project only if you approve it. If you approve this, he will sell it to the current applicant. If you deny it, the deal is dead. So the project, to me, is ugly. It's too big. It's too close to the neighbors. We got even the fence. The neighbor already has a brand-new fence that they put in two years ago. It's, it's just, it's not a good project for my neighborhood.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, may I speak, George Marancy?
Yep. Oh, hold on. Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I just want to reiterate again, just in terms of the zoning. This is essentially zoning compliant with respect to density, floor area ratio. There's no height violation. There's no front yard setback violation in terms of this building not being setback far enough, nor side yard violations. What we're really looking at here is a rear yard violation where the building is no closer. It is wider along the lot, but it's no closer than the existing building at two points. But most of this building is, you know, anywhere from ten to fifteen feet away from the rear lot line. And again, there's no height violation. And we did go through the exercise of producing shadow studies, showing that there are no appreciable shadows to be cast on the buildings in the rear. So again, with a, with a conforming building height, you know, this would be, I mean, it's virtually zoning compliant. I'll just end there.
Okay. So given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review. I think for an extensive landscaping plan. Also, I think, I appreciate the proponents pulling back from Dorchester Avenue, but obviously when pulling back, you're approaching a little bit more on Elm Lawn Street. So I think if the BPDA could look at the sighting of the building in general, and then just a general design review for the exterior materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one three zero six eight two zero, one seventy-five Milton Street. Scope of work includes reframing the roof, interior gut renovation, and in addition to the existing single family. Violation, Article sixty-five, section forty-one, bar street parking loading. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, front yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with the business address of three fifty West Broadway, South Boston. Here with me today is Dennis Greenwood, the architect from Sousa Design, on behalf of the owners Jonathan and Laura Lenahan. So this, as, as stated into the record, this is a proposal to create additional living space into an existing single-family dwelling within a one F five thousand sub-district. The proposal is going to consist to raise the roof line with the gambrel structure addition while maintaining the existing look and character of the neighborhood. This will allow more access to a living area, and will provide an additional six hundred and twenty square feet of livable space. The first floor will add a new covered porch with an additional ten feet of square, square feet addition to widen the actual entranceway. The porch will be approximately about twenty-five feet wide and about seven feet long, I mean, twenty, twenty-five feet long, seven feet wide. There will also be an eighty-eight square foot addition to the left side of the house to match the footprint of the building. In the rear of the property, there will be a five and eleven and a half foot rear deck that will be added. The additional square face will, the square footage would increase by ninety-eight square feet, accumulating to approximately eleven hundred ninety-nine square feet for the first floor plan. Second floor plan, there will be a new bay window on the front of the house that will add an additional thirteen square feet. Further, the proposal will raise the, raise the footprint to the second floor with a rear addition by seventy-seven square feet. Total square footage for the second floor plan will now result in eight hundred and ninety-two square feet. There also will be, currently, there is a livable space in the basement. The basement will also be excavated to include the existing building footprint on the left-hand side, which will add an additional hundred and eighteen square feet to the, to the property to create more additional living space. The total square footage of the basement will now be five hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
What is the proposed use of the basement?
So the proposed use of the basement is just going to be an increase in additional living space in here. We can find that on page six of the plans there, give you a little bit more insight on what it is. Again, currently, right now.
And what's the total size of the addition? Because I'm, so it's.
So the total, for all the additions or just for the basement?
All the additions.
Nine hundred and twenty-nine square feet. So right now, the existing property is at two thousand three hundred fifty-three square feet. And so the total, what's being proposed is at thirty-two seventy-nine. The FAR is already non-conforming. What's required by the code is a point five. What is existing is a point five-two. This would increase the FAR to a point seven-three.
Can you please, who, who's, I'm sorry, whoever's running the screen, can you move back a couple of pages so we can see the basement plan? Thank you.
That would be on page, page six.
Page six? Oh, okay. So that's, what, what is that use in the basement? Is it a family room?
Yes, correct. Yes, there is a family room in the basement. So as you can see where the red area there is in the basement, that will be the additional square footage that will be excavated out just to match the existing footprint of the building. So that, again, that will be excavated out. We approximately have eight-foot sailing height in the basement.
And, sorry, are there any bedrooms down there?
No, no bedrooms, Madam Chair.
Is there a kitchen down there?
No kitchen, Madam Chair.
Okay.
But there is, there is a bathroom down there.
Got it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think it's, you know, it's a, a lot of little adds here and there to, it looks like, increase usability. No questions, and the proposal in the basement is an extension of a family room, it looks like, for a little bit of more seating area. Nothing other than that. I mean, no question.
Any questions from the board?
There's a, there's a comment, the hedges are beautifully trimmed on Google Maps.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting for the proposal on March thirtieth. We received no concerns from the community or Cedar Grove Civic Association. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor Mike Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have letters of support as well.
Okay. We do have a raised hand here. One second. Dennis Greenwood? You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
This is Dennis Greenwood. I'm actually the architect for the project. I was just raising my hand in case there's any questions.
Oh, my apologies. I have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA one three zero nine five three zero, sixty-one Pierce Avenue. This is to extend the existing driveway to the rear of the property and add six parking spaces at the rear, adding new retaining wall. The violation is Article nine, section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Article ten, section one, limitation of parking areas. And Article sixty-five, section eight, accessory parking to an existing is a forbidden use. It's conditional. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. My client is Kevin Borum. He purchased sixty-one Pierce Avenue last June and has been renovating it since that time within zoning requirements. Building is an existing three-family dwelling. It is in a two F five thousand zoning sub-district, so it is a lawful non-conforming use. The proposal is to add an area in the rear yard for six parking spaces. The spaces would be nine point seven feet by eighteen and a half feet, and the parking area will be accessed by an already existing curb cut and the driveway, which meets minimum width requirements. Sighted zoning violations are a bit esoteric, actually. One is for extension of a non-conforming use. It would be my position that this is cited incorrectly. The non-conforming use here is the existing three-family dwelling, but the use is not being extended. We're merely proposing to add parking. Parking is an accessory use. Plans examiner also cited a conditional violation for the parking since it is accessory to a non-conforming use rather than a conforming use. Well, this is not technically incorrect. In over 30 years of zoning practice, I've never actually seen it cited.
Hold on, Mr. Maranci. So can you give us details? And tell us about the driveway. What's the size of that? What's the size of that driveway?
At its minimum point, it's 10 feet wide. So it conforms, it conforms with code and BTD regulations for residential driveway.
And is there parking on that side of the street?
It's an existing curb cut. There is parking, but it's an existing curb cut. This isn't new. In fact, it would probably be reduced to be, you know, less wide than it is now. It would certainly be no more than, you know, 10-foot-wide curb cut, 12 feet at the flares. But it is existing, it's been there for many years.
And this, the other question is, what is the material to be used for that driveway? Is it going to be pervious or impervious materials?
I guess, Madam Chair, that were this to be approved, my assumption because of screening and buffering requirements, it would be with BPD A Design Review, in which case I would suggest the BPD A would dictate what kind of materials would be used, you know, in terms of the paving of the parking area. But I would suggest, oh, I'm sorry, I would state that over 40% of the site that is unoccupied by the existing building would be, would be green space, landscaped open space. There's no usable open space violation being created. In response to some current concerns at the Butters meeting, my client assured that the existing shade trees in the rear of the site will be maintained. And he provided an updated landscape drawing showing privacy screening, sensing, mulch bed, shrubberies. Unfortunately, because of the two-week requirement in terms of submitting updated plans to get them before the board on the hearing date, we weren't able to get the updated landscaping plan before the board today, but it has been produced.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions. And it appears as the council's outlined, I, no issues.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting for the proposal on November 29th, 2021. The opponent has since made changes to the walls around the lot in order to block headlights from the budding backyards. The local civic organizations had no concerns. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council, Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Hi, go ahead.
Ah, yes, Paul D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board, I'd like to request that spaces three and four be removed for improved maneuverability and to offer proper screening and buffering. Thank you.
Okay. I have a raised hand, caller 617233. Send the request to unmute you, go ahead. Hello?
I'm sorry, did you call me, Michelle Bird?
Yeah, yeah. Hi, can you state your name? I go on the record, please.
Michelle Bird, and I live at 6567 Pierce Avenue in Dorchester. It's the property abutting 61 Pierce Avenue. And I appreciate, I was asked the Butters meeting back in November and did raise a concern about there being no sensing to provide for screening and muscle down at that time. And I understand that a proposal has been made to add some sort of screening to the west side of the property that abuts my property to deal with that. But since I have a plan not available, I would have to defer to your committee on that.
Thank you.
But I.
Okay, thank you. Let me just see. Mr. Hampton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPD A. We went on the record recommending denial of this. We echo the sentiments of Bob D'Amico and BTD that six spaces are too many in the backyard.
Madam Chair, George Maranci, if I may. Just in response to Mr. D'Amico and BPD A, I did have a conversation with Mr. D'Amico about the two proposed parking spaces in question. For those two spaces, the central ones, the concern is that they are nearer it than the other spaces to a rear porch structure. The distance between the rear wall, the rear of the parking space and the, in the rearmost space of the porch is 33 and a half feet. Ford Explorer is about 16 and a half feet long, which means that there's a distance of an entire vehicle length to make the turn in and out of those two parking spaces for a large SUV. You know, never mind a smaller car. And I also do have to point out something that is not evident from the site plan, which is that the base of the porch structure is actually poured concrete, which varies from about one foot to three feet above grade. And that is what is supporting the porch structure.
And I have one last question. What's the height of the retaining walls?
The retaining walls on the site are three to four feet, I'm not certain. But they're, they're obviously code, yeah, they're nothing that violates code requirements. They're approximately three to four feet, thereabouts.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPD A Design Review for screening and buffering and with BTD Review for maneuverability.
So screening and buffer, maneuverability, and can we look at pervious materials?
Sure.
Sure. Is there a second?
Second, here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so you're all set with those providers? Good luck.
Thank you.
Following your next case, calling BOA 1310370, 389 DePontet Avenue. This is a change of occupancy to include an ice cream shop on the first floor with basement storage. The violation is Article 65, Section 15, restaurant with takeout, small is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pugini, 10 Phillips Road of Ratrie, on behalf of the applicant. So this is 389 DePontet Avenue, Dorchester. It's located in the DePontet Business District. The zoning in this district is local convenience. As Mr. Fortune stated, this proposal is to create an ice cream shop in the existing commercial building. This will be a subdivision of existing space with the, this side is an ice cream shop. The other side in the future will hopefully be a yoga studio. Formerly, this was a very large dentist office.
I love that, I love that, going from yoga to ice cream.
One after the other, Madam Chair. The only violation is a conditional use of small takeout. The use as an ice cream shop isn't allowed use. And there will also be no manufacturing of ice cream on-site. As far as programming, the retail space will be approximately 586 square feet. Egress at side and front, all entrances are handicap accessible. There will be a side service window in the alleyway to the left of the space. There will be an accessible bathroom, and the basement will be only for mechanical use and storage. And there will be approximately 797 square feet of storage and mechanical space of 365 square feet.
And how will deliveries occur?
So there's an alleyway where the deliveries can be done.
Okay, through alleyway, okay. And the name of the business?
Lazy Bear Ice Cream, Madam Chair.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no question. Look forward to it, come to the neighborhood.
Any, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office heard no concerns from the community. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council, Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
I'm trying to have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
To approve with BPD A Design Review?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is it the usual takeout language?
For this applicant only?
Yep, takeout language and this applicant only. So, Ms. Panato, are you comfortable with those?
Yes, those amendments are fine.
Does it second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Following your next case, calling BOA 1269408, 1256 to 1262 River Street. This is a change of occupancy from pharmacy to function hall without alcohol. Violation is Article 69, Section 8, use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, business address of 51 Dobson Road. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a pharmacy to a function hall. The zoning sub-district is the neighborhood shopping district. And our violation is that the use proposed is a conditional use. We're seeking a conditional use program.
Tell us more about this function hall. What are the hours of operation? What's the capacity? Who is going to be running it?
Yep, so the capacity is 224 patrons. The approximate square foot of the function hall is approximately 2,770 square feet. And my clients are proposing to do wedding receptions, graduation parties, things of that nature. Robert Tambi and Vincent Bullega, who are the proprietors, are also on the call. I don't know, Jessica, if you could unmute them.
So, I'm just curious, so it's going to be wedding receptions, et cetera, without alcohol?
That's correct. And so what we're proposing, Madam Chair, will be that people leasing the space will have to go through City of Boston's licensing board to get one-day event, entertainment events and licenses in order to have functions that will contain alcohol at the, at the site.
I see, so that's your workaround, okay? Yeah, okay, a license, okay. So, let's see what else. Where is parking proposed to be accommodated?
There are, there's a municipal lot across the street and then on-street parking. There is no off-street parking, because this is a part of a bunch of businesses that are on River Street.
Okay, and will there be any cooking on-site?
No, ma'am, there's not.
No food preparation, anything?
On-site, no.
Okay, and is this going to be handicap accessible?
I believe it is.
It is.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, you know, it looks pretty straightforward, and it does appear to be accessible. Doesn't, is there any exterior changes to this? Looks like not, but just want to make sure.
No, there is no, no exterior changes.
Okay. No questions. Pretty straightforward in terms of the plans.
Any questions from the board?
Does the applicant have an experience running a function hall?
Robert or Vincent, could you answer that? Because they're on the call as well.
Yes, I would take that question. My name is Robert Tambi, for the record. Myself and Vincent Bullega acquired this place to add to the existing business we have here on River Street. We're very friendly in the community. Yes, I personally have an experience running a function hall, not in this state, but out of Massachusetts. But we are people of very good character. This, this is something that we, we, we hope to hire an event manager, because I'm a physical therapist. We in time and again. We, just for a point of correction, lawyer's small said is 2,000 square feet, is actually 4,200. I'm looking here at the site plan and the lease. And to answer one other question, which I think the Madam Chair asked, but we both missed it, is that the lease indicate that the functions are only evenings and weekends. So that, that idea of parking is actually swallowed by our scheduling.
And let's just ask you another questions. The thing is, if there's, if there's an issue at any one of these events, who does somebody contact? Because, because it sounds like you're trying to, that, you know, the idea of hiring an event person kind of removes it from you.
Let, let me clarify that aspect. Either myself or Vincent Bullega, who are the owners or who are the managers, one of us will be on-site at all times when there's a function. Even, even if we are off-site for a few minutes, we have a closed security security camera inside and surrounding the building that we can monitor from our phone or from any computer anywhere. Yes, but we'll be actively involved in the management of the place. But we need somebody with that, with those social skills that can talk to people and get people of good character to hold events.
And the other, I have two other questions. Music. Generally, when we see function halls or bars or anything like that, there's a concern about keeping music volume down or, and putting it off at a certain time and security so that should there be any disruptions, you know, there's some, some man, somebody there to deal with those.
Yes, ma'am. To that, we, we have a plan in place. The first is that the place was initially wired such that we, we can control the volume of the music, that those security and those computers are placed in. Then, number two, it is also soundproof. Number three, we don't allow outside speakers to be brought in. Like some of those speakers that play at Fenway is on our standard contract form. You come in with your music equipment and use our speakers, which are low to moderate frequencies. That will not disturb the neighbors. And actually, there's no neighbor around there at night. This is a typical CBD, Central Business District area.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody to speak here in support or in opposition?
Morning, Madam Chair, or excuse me, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And the applicants, Robert and Vincent, for this proposal completed the community process. They notified all the Butters mailing and distributing flyers for the community meeting that I hosted that was held on March 24th. At this community meeting, High Park Main Streets was present. Some of Butters that were present at the community meeting verbally gave support for this project. In addition, we have letters of support that have been sent to the board. Just speaking on Robert and Vincent as business owners, as they also run the, they have a therapy. Yeah, physical therapy shop that's a few doors down. So they were speaking on the character of them and just wanted to give support. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Danielle, was there any conversation about hours of operation, whether it was midnight or one or, or anything like that?
There was questions around the concern of parking in that schedule. And when those questions were brought up, Robert and Vincent explained that they have parking in the back where the municipal lot is, as well as, since this is the business commercial district area, there are several. commercial district area, there are several spaces for parking in the area as well. There were not concerns from any of the butters in terms of loud noise or music or how that would impact from that end.
Okay. I'm sorry, do you have a raised hand here? DJ Charlie? I sent the request on you, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Charles Williams, also known as DJ Charlie B. Former Boston resident, reside at 115 Leon Court in Hanson, Mass. I am in support of this space. I am a, I work in the High Park area, I have family, relatives and many clients. Robert and Vincent, as many have mentioned, also own the physical therapy, which is next door. And this space will be good.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Izzy Slater and I'm here on behalf of City Council at Large, Reese City, who would gen, our office would like to go on record in support of the project.
Okay. Okay, so, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for you. So, for this place to operate without alcohol, they do not need a review by the Licensing Board, right?
That is correct.
So, only with alcohol would they go to the Licensing Board, which would then determine hours of operation and what time the facility would close?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. So, okay, so this is a conditional use and I'm trying to figure out what the conditions might be, but may I have a motion? Because it looks like it is, of course, signage to this applicant only and some form of control on closing hours. Is it a 1:00 AM closing or a midnight closing? So, and please, Ms. Ambassador, if you could mute everybody so the board can kind of talk this through. Any ideas?
How about, well, the other things you mentioned are clear. The only question is the closing time. How about midnight during the week and 1:00 AM on the weekend?
Okay. And 1:00 AM weekend.
Does that seem reasonable? Would we put any kind of, like, they'd come back to us in a year just to see how things are going? I don't know.
I'm keen on that, yes. So, what, do we want to say a year?
Yep, a year. So, I can, I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
Is that somebody else?
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna request a two-year sunset clause.
No, we'd like to see, Counselor, we'd like to see them before then, just to see if there are any red flag issues that we should just be clear about.
Will it take time to? Is there going to be time to build out the space before it's operational?
We can do a year from occupancy.
Yeah, let's just make sure we do a year from occupancy, because we've written that before.
I'll try to make a motion. So, make a motion to approve with BPA review for signage and then for hours of operation close at 12:00 AM during the week and then 1:00 AM on Friday and Saturday nights and Sunday nights? I don't know if that's a weekday or not. With a one-year sunset clause or return to this board clause for this review of the previous year's operation.
And to this applicant only?
And this applicant only, yes, I wrote that.
One year from, from?
Oh, from the certificate of occupancy, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're outside, good luck.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you so much, have a good day.
You too.
Calling the last case for 10:30.
How do you do, Madam Chair?
Calling BOA 1289077, 4160 to 4164 Washington Street. This is a 9,400 square feet, four-story basement building with six residential units on floors 2, 3 and 4, two core and shell commercial units, basement and ground floor, with parking for four vehicles on the ground level. Violation is Article 67, Section 33, traffic visibility across the corner is insufficient. Article 67, Section 29, specific design review, the street wall continuity on Bexley Road. Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 12, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 67, Section 12, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 67, Section 12, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Fitzgerald from DLA Piper, 33 Arch Street in Boston. Here on behalf of Juan Chavez, the applicant, who is the owner of 4160 to 4164 Washington Street in Rosendale, also the longtime proprietor of the auto body shop that exists at the location currently. Mr. Chavez is proposing at this location to demolish the existing one- to two-story auto body structure and to construct in its place a four-story mixed-use building consisting of six residential units on floors 2 through 4, two commercial units on the ground floor facing Washington Street, and four off-street parking spaces at the rear of the building to be accessed from Bexley Road, for a total of, for a total ground gross floor area, excuse me, approximately 9,232 square feet. The lot area is approximately 3,150 square feet. The commercial units will each measure about 1,000 square feet, consisting of 470 square feet in the basement, which will be used for storage purposes only. And on the first level, the commercial units will measure approximately 533 square feet. Each of the residential units on floors 2 through 4 will measure approximately 1,051 square feet. It will consist of three bedrooms and two bathrooms each. It's a neighborhood shopping sub-district within the Rosendale Neighborhood District. As the secretary has just pointed out, we are seeking relief for excessive FAR. The required FAR under the code is 1.0, we're proposing 2.96. The required height is three stories of 35 feet. We are proposing four stories and approximately 37 feet, eight and a half inches. We're seeking relief also for insufficient parking. In the Neighborhood Shopping District, two parking spaces are required per dwelling unit as well as two parking spaces for 1,000 square feet of gross floor area of office or retail space. So, for this project, it would be a requirement of 16 parking spaces. We are proposing four. And the final two violations, as the secretary pointed out, where the, is the traffic visibility across the corner, the corner of Bexley and Washington Street, and street wall continuity along Bexley Road, as we're reconstructing the wall on Bexley Road and it's not going to be coextensive with the structures along Bexley Road. As you might recall, this, Mr. Chavez appeared before this board last year, I believe in July, July of 2021, with a similar project. He was proposing a four-story project similar to today with two commercial units in one residential unit on the ground floor. Six residential units on floors 2 through 4, so a total of seven residential units as opposed to six, which he's proposing today. He was not, and I'm sorry, he was also proposing a shared roof deck without any parking. So, no parking was being proposed at that time. As far as design is concerned, last year, he was proposing a double stair tower for access to the roof deck.
So, Counselor, can I, whoever's running the screen, and I apologize, can you go back to the very beginning? Because it looks like there are two lots, are these lots going to be combined or are they already combined?
It is just one lot, Madam Chair. It's a one, it's a 3,150 square foot lot, it's just one lot.
So, it's a 3,150 square foot lot? Let's, I just want?
That's correct.
Just because if I look, stop right here, please. So, there's 9,000, so the building is 9,300 and the entire lot is 3,150?
That's correct.
Okay. And is, and let me ask you, so there's no roof deck, is this an elevator building?
It is, Madam Chair. We are proposing an elevator to run from the basement to the roof.
Okay. So, you know, this is marginally better than the last proposal, but tell us what kind of thought process, because I know Mr. Chavez has responded to the parking concerns, because I know that was raised and this continues to be raised, it sounds like, from all the letters that we've gotten, we've gotten as a board about this project, that parking continues to be an issue and competition for parking at the, at the street. Did the applicant think about eliminating those commercial units?
Madam Chair, that was considered, however, the business community has voiced, you know, support for the commercial units. As you know, that's on the sort of the, that's right sort of in the Rosendale Square Business District or on the outskirts of it, I should say. So, you know, dating back to when Mr. Chavez was proposing a project last year, he met with the business community who voiced concern about their not, originally not being proposed commercial spaces. So, in response to the business community's concerns, he had agreed to include two commercial spaces. And I think frankly, Madam Chair, I think that is also consistent with the neighborhood shopping and sort of neighborhood business sub-district zoning, where you have, I think it's fairly consistent, where you have commercial uses on the ground floor with residential, you know, on the second floor and above.
Okay, so, yeah, so let me ask you then, the next question is that this is just a 3,000 square foot lot. The FAR that's required is one and you're pushing it up close to three. Can you tell us how that's contextual then?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think it is, I think, I mean, as you pointed out, it's a small lot, you know, that is the reason for these violations. I mean, we have some serious law constrictions here, which is the reason why I think that, you know, we're only able to support four parking spaces, for example. But I think that, if you look at that corridor between the Rosendale Square and Forest Hills, I think that you have many buildings like this that are, that are, you know, sort of have similar densities. And I think, you know, and I have heard this board very recently in speaking on projects in this area, specifically in this corridor, has stated that this corridor can support more density. I have heard this board say that. And so, I think, and I think the reason why this, you know, the close to 3.0 FAR appears a lot worse than it is, it's because it is, you know, it is a small lot. But that being said, I think it's very consistent with recently approved projects, with projects that are in the area today and, you know, projects that are sort of in the pipeline and pending that will likely appear before this board very soon. So, while I certainly appreciate that, you know, a 1.0 requirement and we're, you know, and we're proposing 2.96, I can certainly appreciate the concern of the board. I think that's, you know, it's a product of being on a small lot, but that being said, I think it's very, I think it's entirely consistent with what you're seeing in this area and especially in that corridor between Forest Hills and Rosendale Square.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. Proposal as you see it, there's nothing hiding in here, so it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling new with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this town, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information, property owner has included more parking project this time around and has removed the shared roof deck after concerns were expressed from the community. The owner has also had two environmental assessments, saying there's no contamination. It's in the process of securing these new assessments for documentation. We still have heard concerns from the neighborhood regarding changes, what they feel would be to the character of the neighborhood due to the design of the building, the density, as well as competition for parking, which we've heard earlier, especially regarding those commercial units on the ground floor potentially impacting parking with the loading zones and other vehicles utilizing them. We received 13 letters of opposition this morning from local business leaders and also received two letters of support as well. With that, we defer back to the board. Thank you.
Some clarification, you received opposition from business owners?
Correct, Madam Chair.
And did they state what their opposition is based on?
Yes. So, the things that stuck out, some concerns about sightlines with the building potentially impacting safety where it interjects with the corner, concerns about the character of the neighborhood, the building not fitting in with the existing architecture and density.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, anybody else?
Yep, Counselor Mejia? Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, BPA. This is Counselor at Large, Julia Mejia. I believe that I also see Jordan Frias, who is the Chief of Staff for Counselor Arroyo's office, so he is the district counselor, but I'm here as an at-large counselor to state and go on the record in my support of this particular project. I do know that the folks who have been working on it, this is not their first time in front of you and in front of the community, and they've done their due diligence to not only here, but to also respond to the needs of the community and adjust their plans accordingly. So, I'm here to offer my strong support on behalf of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Jordan, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frias, here from Counselor Arroyo's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jordan.
Madam Chair, members?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Council to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have letters of support, we also have the letters of opposition as well.
I do have a raised hand by Judith. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Judy Coomer. I am at 117 Florence Street, a block away. And Madam Chair, members of the board, I have points of concern and I'm talking against the proposal. The first is about density. The side street, Bexley, has two-story homes. The main street, Washington Street, has single-story commercial buildings and at four stories, this proposed building would tower over the others in the area by at least two stories. I'm concerned that approval would set a precedent for too-tall development on Washington Street, which would make it feel like a canyon. And one of the reasons that I moved to the neighborhood was because of the low density. I would be okay, by the way, if they scaled it back to three stories. My second concern is that if, when they come back with a revised proposal or if this does get approved, this stands at the corner of Bexley Road, which is one of only two access roads into the neighborhood. It's a major cut-through and I'm concerned that when the owners will come back with a revised plan or this gets approved, that construction will make passage difficult on Bexley. So, if there's some proposal, some amendment that could be acknowledging the needs for traffic to be able to pass easily, I would be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Milagros, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Milagros Marte and a radio host, producer, also resident in 1032 Road in Roselandale, and I'm here to support Mr. Chavez. I think that construction will be very good for the community and strongly support him.
Thank you. Okay, and someone more?
My name is Lori Radwin. I live at 49 Augustus and you should have tens of letters in opposition from Rosendale Square Business Owners, employees and shoppers. The insufficient parking spaces in this building matter. There are not enough parking spaces in the squares described in a recent Boston Transportation Department Rosendale Square Parking Study. The study explains that the streets around 4160 to 64 Washington Street could serve as parking for Rosendale Square small business customers. And along these lines in your letters, you'll see the small business owners, SAPP and customers describe a lack of parking as negatively affecting their ability for customers to show. describe a lack of parking as negatively affecting, uh, their ability for customers to shop and access services. And as you noted, in essence, if the proposed project is approved with its parking space violations, condominium orders would be in competition with business customers for space, and this is hardly fair. The appellant can provide more spaces when the, uh, development is built, and small business owners cannot create their own parking. Thank you very much.
Thanks. No additional raised hands, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes?
Um, just, just to point out, I should have, I should have included this with my presentation, but along Bexley Road, just for the board's consideration, um, where there is currently an extensive curb cut to allow for the, the double sort of garage doors for access and egress into the, into the auto repair shop, that, that is going to be substantially replaced by a curb, which will allow for an additional two to three parking spaces in that area for the residents of the community. I think, second of all, I think it's important to point out that, um, this certainly is, I, I think, by definition, a transit-oriented development. I mean, it's serviced by multiple bus lines from Forest Hills, Points West, and it's less than a quarter of a mile from the Rosendale Village commuter rail stop. We fully expect that the residents of this building aren't all going to own a vehicle. Um, and then just as a sort of caveat, this, you know, especially in response to this, to the last caller, you know, as you know, and I know, Madam Chair, you are, as a resident of Rosendale, you know the area well, you know, this, this is on sort of the very outskirts of the sort of main business district. I have personally gone to visit Juan at his building a dozen times, and, and have actually never had any issues parking in that area. There's always been plenty at that, in the square, very difficult during the day, regular business hours, absolutely. I, I've gone at all times of day. Out where Juan is, towards Healy Field, and heading out towards Forest Hills, and that, it, I've, I've never had an issue parking around Juan's building. Um, so just, just full, full, that's worth, Madam Chair, I just think that in that specific section of, of sort of the outskirts of the business district, it's a little bit different than the main business area.
Okay, so, um, thank you. Um, Ms. Ambassador, we've got everybody. Um, as a Rosendale resident, I do feel that Mr. Chavez is heading in the right direction. However, I do think that it's still, it's still dense, given the fact that it is proposed as three times, um, the FAR that's required. Um, and the height, I mean, the, um, Bexley Road is two and a half, maybe some three-story, but mostly two and a half. And it's true that, um, this proposal will eliminate the extra wide curb cut. Um, I'm a frequent, um, visitor to that part of the neighborhood, and, um, it is true, but however, for distance from the corner, that will not increase, truly increase the number of spaces. And oftentimes, you know, with business districts, with all these developments, the, the businesses get choked by the lack of parking, because people then just throw up their hands and say that they will go to another business district or elsewhere where they can do this. The other thing I think that works against this project, um, as proposed, because I do think, uh, less density is possible, is that the, uh, morning dedicated bus lane eliminates parking, um, along that, uh, Washington Street corridor, which just, um, handicaps resident, handicap residents, um, in the building. Um, so anyway, um, given that, um, may I have, Mr. Fitzgerald? Um, there, this is a conversation with the board, so if you could please hold. Um, and may I have a motion, please, from the board?
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to put my name in motion, because I do think that this is headed in the right direction. However, it is going to have a negative impact on this part of Rosendale. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members. Have a great day.
Calling the first case for rediscussion, cause BOA one-two-six-eight-six-three-six-one-sixty-seven Maverick Street. This erect a new residential four-story building with eleven units, roof decks, and four rear parking spaces. The violation is Article fifty-three, Section eight, the use is forbidden. Article twenty-seven T dash five, this is in East Boston iPod. Article thirty-two, Section four, this is G card applicability. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking and loading. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-two, roof structure restrictions. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building has excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drego with Drego and Toscano, with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant, and I also have Eric Zacherson from Context Design, who's the architect, uh, on the proposal. Uh, in this rendering that you're looking, now it's the building proposed to the very right of this block. The proposal is to raise the existing commercial structure and to erect a new building with eleven residential units and four parking spaces in the rear. Uh, this project willing to have an affordability component, uh, of a two-bedroom unit on site. Um, our lot size is four thousand five hundred square feet. This particular zoning sub-district is a three-F two thousand. Uh, just to go over, uh, since I see we are on the plans, the layout. Uh, in the basement, there will be some utility, and a utility room, and a storage facility for the residents. Um, the housing will begin on the first floor, which will have three units, uh, two studios and one one-bed. Uh, on the second floor, that'll house another three units, one studio, one one-bed, and one two-bed unit. The third floor will house the three additional units, one studio, one one-bed, and one two-bed. And then we have a recessed fourth floor, uh, that is pulled in on the front, seven foot two inches, I'm sorry, uh, eight feet in the front and seven foot two inches in the rear. And that will house, uh, four, I'm, I'm sorry, two units, two two-bed, uh, units, one with a front deck and one with a rear deck. Uh, on our roof, we have two exclusive roof decks, uh, just for units, uh, ten and eleven. Those will be accessed through hatch only. Just to go over the violations that were mentioned, this is a three-F district, uh, although it does have MFR all around it, we are proposing eleven units, so a use variance. Uh, we would need additional lot area variance. FAR, we're proposing two-point-three, one-point-oh is what's allowed. Our height is, as proposed, is four stories at forty-four feet six inches. What's allowed is three stories and thirty-five feet. Uh, for open space, we have eight hundred and thirty-six square feet total. Uh, three hundred square feet per unit is required. Uh, front yard is five, we are modal, so we're zero, matching the buildings to the left of us. Um, our, uh, rear yard, we're close, at twenty-six feet seven inches, it varies slightly, twenty-two feet nine to twenty-six seven, and what's required is thirty. Um, parking is two per dwelling units, we do have four in the rear. Just to point out, we are five hundred feet walking distance to Maverick T Station. Uh, I, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Christian, are you on?
Good afternoon, members of the board, Christian Semenali, boss of Rowan Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
We have those letters as well, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Councilor, what is the zoning sub-district here?
It is a three-F two thousand, Madam Chair.
Okay, and the lot size is what?
Four thousand five hundred square feet.
And you're still, and you're proposing eleven units, right?
We are eleven units, but that, and that includes an affordable uno, unit, sorry, a two-bedroom unit, and a contribution to the IDP fund.
Okay, so, this is, let's see, that three, six, nine, it's four times, almost four times the number of units that would be allowed as of right. On, on this, because, um, no, it actually, for three thousand two, two, um, two thousand square feet, no, it's, it's actually almost three times. Um, how are the plans, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good. Uh, I, I think we, we fully understand what's being proposed here in terms of its size and scale. I mean, it does have a setback at the fourth floor, and the three-story is more consistent with the main street, but, um, it is up against the, uh, Greenway bike, bike path. Um, so it doesn't have an abutting there to the left, however. It is encroaching in on, I think, on the right-hand side. I just wanted to make sure, so...
Sure.
It looks like you're introducing a, a window well adjacent to some existing windows on the adjacent building, but you don't have any windows in that window well, right? That's just a relief for their, their windows? Okay.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. And if you go up to the first picture, Mr. Robinson, the rendering, I know you had mentioned, just because you had mentioned context, if we go to the rendering, there was a four-story building approved just two down from us by the board. So, we're, we're in line exactly with the height of that building. Um, across the street from us is the Greenway Apartments, which is four stories. And then behind us is the Victory Gardens, which is four stories, so. I do, and you're right, to the left of us is three, but two down.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said, I'm still on busy meeting.
Yeah, no further question.
What were they saying about a point?
Any, any other questions from the board?
Can you, can you speak of the landscaping plan, since you're right of abutting there?
Sorry, sorry, um, um, Ms. Panato, can everybody mute themselves so that this board can understand what's going on? Uh, Ms. Panato, please go ahead.
Yes, I'm wondering about the landscaping plan, given that we're abutting the East Boston Greenway and the bike paths.
Sure, so what we did is, we have met extensively, um, to address parks' questions, concerns, as well as the Greenway group. So, we, right next to us is a very large sloping hill at Ray Change that goes to the Greenway. So we can't access that by foot. But what we have done is, we hired Verdan, Verdan Landscape to put a full landscape plan together, and what they're going to do is, because there's already landscape there, but to remove invasive, invasive species and replace that with new sustainable species, as well as making a large donation to redo, as the Greenway sees fit, that whole landscape along the side. Um, we also, because drainage along the Greenway has been a major concern in the area, we have put together a recharge system that goes above and beyond what's even required from water and sewer to help, because this will significantly help with this recharge system with drainage along the Greenway as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, the roof structure restrictions, uh, tell us about the roof deck.
So we have two exclusive roof deck, uh, roof decks, Madam Chair, one in the rear, one in the front. Um, and so those are exclusive to those top units, one is two hundred and eighty square feet, one is four hundred and twenty-five square feet, um, and they're accessible only by hatch.
Okay, and how will loading actually occur in this building?
So, the access point, so one of the unique things that none of the other buildings over here have is we have easement rights in the back. And if we go down to the very last page of, of this presentation, there is an easement plan, it's eighteen feet wide, and so, um, it, it allows us vehicular access. So if something didn't need, we do have our parking access that way. And in terms of pickup, you see that bottom sort of gray slashed area, um, we do have the rights to traverse down there if we need to unload or, or load quickly, obviously, so, um...
And is that also the access to the fore parking?
It is for the fore parking, and it also is a shared easement with the Victory Garden Apartment Complex, which is at the left of us.
Okay. Um, any other questions from the board? Yes, anybody here, Bob, did, did you have a statement?
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Um, I was just wondering if they could, uh, have a consideration for, uh, mitigation for the Mary Ellen Welsh Greenway, because a lot of folks are very concerned that, um, it's going to be like walking down a hallway, especially when you consider the proposed development for the East Boston Health Center, uh, project. And, um, I just was wondering about the size of the parking spaces, I can't, I can't make it out.
They're, yeah, they are full spaces, Bob, eight and a half by twenty, and we did commit, uh, a monetary number directly with them. And I don't want to get into too much of the detail, but we do have an agreement with, uh, with the Greenway folks for, for donation.
Okay, um, any, anything else? Okay, um, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. The applicant received support from the GOV, uh, Street Association, and many changes were made based on comments from the community. They reduced the number of units from twenty to eleven, five to four stories, and top floor has been pushed back, if they are, and increased unit sizes. Uh, the applicant also worked diligently with the Greenway to design a landscape connected with the project. Our office received twelve letters of support for this project. And at this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary, we have those letters, the Mayor's Office spoken.
Okay. And I do have a few hands, I'll start with Janet, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, um, good afternoon, my name is Janet Knott, and I live at sixty-three A Maverick Square in East Boston. My home is near the Mary Ellen Welsh Greenway, and I would like to say that this is a beautiful space and a key element to the health and wellness for me, my neighbors, and the community. I believe city real estate will be good neighbors to the Greenway as well. Adding more plants and trees to the area that abuts the project and create, will create more lush landscape for all residents to enjoy. Thank you.
Okay, and Christina, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record?
Christina Murphy, one-fifty-three Everett Street. Um, I support this project because I think it will bring much-needed housing to the neighborhood, and I really like that it has an affordable aspect to it.
Okay, thank you, and Vinnie, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
How you doing? Uh, my name's Vinnie Plomo, and I live at one-thirteen College Street. And I do support the project and appreciate the affordability aspect as well that they have going in.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands.
Um, and just for clarification again, uh, at what, what AMI is the affordable unit supposed to be at?
Seventy percent, Madam Chair.
Seventy percent?
Yeah.
And it's one unit, right?
Correct, plus a payment, uh, to the IDP fund as well.
Okay. Okay, so, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to review, uh, motion to approve a BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, this is Tom. Um, is it possible that we could have the BPDA identify that the affordable units, uh, through the designer process?
Uh, and, and we put that in the decision?
Yeah, that's proviso, we're part of the BPDA, like, things we're to look at.
I, I thought that Jeff had already identified one, but I'll leave it up to him. I, I thought he identified it as a two-bedroom.
It is, but that, you know, it is a two-bedroom.
All right, thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-three-seven-zero-one-four-one-fifty-seven West Springfield Street. This is a renovate and extend existing building and change lead-off from a church to nine dwelling units. The violation is Article nine, Section, Section zero-one, reconstruction and extension of a non-conforming building. Article thirty-two, Section thirty-two dash four, groundwater, this is in the G card. Article sixty-four, Section thirty-four, restricted roof structure regulations. Article sixty-four, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-four, Section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-four, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chairwoman, this is Eric Robinson, I'll be recusing myself from this case.
Okay, so this is a six-member, um, a six-member board. Um, so the applicant will need five members in support. Um, and so you have two choices, to go ahead or to recuse until, uh, or to defer until we have a full board. a full board.
Madam Chair for the applicant, George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston, and we choose to proceed with the six-member board.
Okay, excellent. So, um, and Mr. Olick, you've had a chance to look at the plans.
I have.
Okay, so please go ahead, Mr. Marancy.
Madam Chair, as a preliminary matter, there is a G card citation. I don't know if the chair wishes to take G card first.
Yes, um, go ahead, Christian.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Landmark Trust, we have both letters from the applicant.
Madam Chair, we have the letters as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is an application for the adaptive residential reuse of the building at 157 West Springfield Street, which was for over 30, 130 years, home to the Ebenezer Baptist Church. The last service of the church was held in early 2020. Unfortunately, as the cost of maintaining the aging structure grew over the years, and since now only about 20% of the congregants actually live in the neighborhood with limited parking available in the area, a difficult decision to relocate was made by the church out of necessity. I have a very brief presentation on zoning. We have Michael Delafay from Road Eight Architects, who will actually present the architectural plans. A great deal of care and skill have gone into those plans. I would not want to do a disservice by presenting them myself. The priority of church leadership was to...
So, Mr. Marancy, do you mind if we just flip this so that we can understand exactly what is being proposed, the unit sizes, et cetera, and then we'd be happy to backtrack to your citation of what's proposed?
Absolutely. I I will allow Michael Delafay to proceed, and then when Michael has concluded, if the board has any questions for him. If not, I will then do a presentation on zoning. Michael.
Thank you, thank you, George. Michael Delafay, Road Eight Architects, 535 Albany Street, Boston. I'm joined here with Reverend Thompson from the Ebenezer Baptist Church in case any of the board members have questions for him. We are proposing nine units, and they are as follows: two one-bedroom flats at 650, and one of those units is a voluntary IDP unit. We have one one-bedroom flat at 800. We have two two-bedroom flats at 1500, and we have three three-bedroom duplexes at 1800 square feet. And then there's one three-bedroom triplex at 2500. I will also mention there's a little bit of inefficiency there due to staircases in the triplex. We're proposing nine parking spaces, one for each unit, and I'll take you through that in just a moment. Madam Ambassador, can you go to page three, please, which is where we are? You'll see there on the right hand, up one, there you go, you'll see on the right-hand side, you'll see the nine parking spaces accessed through a small ramp on the right-hand side. And then on the left-hand plan, you'll see the first floor of residential. In the lower, or so the southeast corner of that plan, you'll see the residential lobby. This is at grade, and the lobby is here in order to provide handicap access to the building. On the right-hand side, left-hand side of that plan, you'll see three, uh, three stoops. So our plan is to keep those three stoops completely intact, and this is for landmark reasons. We feel that it's important to maintain the validity of the existing structure. So on that plan, you'll also see that there is a two-bedroom unit on the lower half of the plan that has access through one, through a stoop, and it also has handicap access via centralized corridor. In the upper right-hand, excuse me, upper left-hand corner northwest, there is the another access to a unit, and this is the triplex. So this will get, uh, bring that person up into up into their unit. And the center stoop is being utilized as a second entrance to the building, so any of the occupants within the building can come and go through that centralized stair in the main stoop. Madam Ambassador, can you go to the next page, please? Here, these two plans illustrate the three duplex units and then the upper floor of the triplex. So the triplex is the, in the northwest corner, and that does have access to the street. You'll see that all four of the units here are have bedroom levels that is below the brick within the existing church. And then up above the sort of eve line is what we're calling the public floor, so this is the living space. And we've done this to bring light and air into those particular aspects of the unit. So the sleeping floors are more quiet and within the church, and the more public aspects of each unit is up above the brick of the of the church. And you'll see a great deal of stairs within there as well, and they all have elevator access. Madam Ambassador, next, next page, please. And then here, you're seeing the final three units. On the right plan, right-hand side plan, you're seeing a one-bedroom plus and then another one-bedroom. And then on the north side of the plan is a two-bedroom, and these all have outdoor space as well, so terraces and some views within these these dormers. Madam Ambassador, can you take us to page eight, please?
So let me just ask a quick question. Is everything being done within the envelope of the building, or is there any additions proposed or exterior modifications?
There, the the brick shell of the structure will remain, and the roof will be modified with a dormer-like addition on both sides.
Do we have a view of of that that proposed design?
We absolutely do. Madam Ambassador, can you go to page 11 or 12? One of these two is fine. So this is the proposed addition. We are maintaining the existing ridge height of the structure. We're not going above that, and what we're proposing is basically pulling the roof up to form two large dormers that will house the units. And if you wouldn't mind going to page 11, the one before this. This is another aspect of the design that we wanted to touch on. So as you can see, we're completely revitalizing the existing brick structure we're going to be repainting, and we're going to be restoring the front three doors. These will be turned into glass so that the occupants could actually have visibility to the outside and gain access to their units off of the street. This is really to bring awareness to the idea that people are kind of coming and going from here, that this is a residential building, which we feel is very important. The stoops will be completely restored, and as you can see in the front, we've had preliminary discussions with the Boston Landmarks Commission, and they've really suggested that we take note of the existing or the types of gardens that are within the south end. So that is what you see there in the front. And actually, Madam Ambassador, if you can go to page nine. Up one more. And then this is an example of that south-end garden that is traditional in the area, so our our expectation is to revitalize the gardens in front of the church and bring them up to the standards of the south end, along with restoring the stoops. And then furthermore, we feel that it's important to, in in some way, memorialize the Ebenezer Baptist Church and the significant history that's happened here, and these are just some early ideas of what we need.
Okay, um, hold on, hold on. I I understand that one of our board members may need to leave early, and given the fact that we have a six-member board, I'd like to move now to, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, George Marancy, I don't know if we spoke about zoning. I'm sorry, I don't know if you want me to do that.
Um, no.
You want me to do the plans?
Well, yes, how are the plans?
Um, the plans are very nice. They have done a very nice design combination of of keeping the traditional elements and 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 adding new elements. I I have no issues whatsoever with the architectural design. The only, the only concern is, as always, that this is nine units.
Okay, Mr. Olick, sorry to cut you off, but we are going to be losing a board member momentarily, and I just want to make sure that since we've gone through this whole process, we are a board member short that we have enough time to...
Okay, but in any case, it's nine units, so...
Okay, got it. Okay, any, I'm sorry, anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Uh, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Crucial from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The mayor's office would like to defer to the board on this matter. The applicant has held numerous meetings on and off-site, as well as in a butters meeting hosted by our office in October of 2021, and they've continued to communicate with the community since then. We've received seven letters of support, including one from the Hurley Blocks Neighborhood Association and one letter of opposition from Chester Square Neighbors. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have those letters. Sorry. So go ahead, go ahead.
Nick Bornstein from Rep Santiago's office. Rep Santiago shared a letter of support and wants to express his support for the project today.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have those letters the mayor spoke of and...
Okay, can we have Melissa and Carol Blair?
Can you guys speak? I'm I'm internally in a quandary because I do want to give a good due process, but okay, so let's see, let's let's just, please, everybody give us new information.
Yes, so this is Carol Blair to 22 North Hampton Street, President of Chester Square Neighbors. I'm here to report that many meetings with the developer team, the three issues are that there are three issues unresolved. First, we don't need more luxury housing, only a block away. Harriet Tubman House site is is providing 66 units with needed parking, but workforce housing is in short supply and would be welcome. Second, this building has always been a meeting place. We've lost too many churches and spaces to gather, including Tubman House. The new Ebenezer maybe could bring people together, perhaps by hosting historical exhibit, a community room, childcare, or flexible space for the Hurley's bilingual K-28 programs. The Ebenezer has always been a connector. The proposed design is a fortress. Here, where the south end and Roxbury meet on the margin of Mass and Cass, we need neighborly interactions. If the Ebenezer is to be residential, we need street-side commies and goings, windows where people will look out, and engaging open space. Third, we believe this proud building, home to a church founded by former slaves, should inspire Hurley School students and all who pass by. A plaque on a structure that has become a pedestal for penthouses is not adequate to convey the Ebenezer's history of African-American activism. I also want to speak as chair for Ruby Coleman, a longtime Ebenezer church member who lives next door. She was prepared to testify in December and February when the developer deferred, but cannot do so today. Night before last, she was with her brother when he passed. Ebenezer Church baptized Miss Ruby's children. They were there on Sundays and came from the Hurley after school. Miss Ruby told us, "The people who live there, they don't want to see us. They have their entrance way around the other side. As soon as they end there, they'll want us gone." With all this, we ask you to deny the appeal. Thank you for your attention.
If I may speak, my name is Melita. I am one of the parents at the Hurley School. We have great concerns about the lack of community space as well. We also have great concerns about the construction that will take probably a long time, and as you saw in that last photo on slide 12, our school is right next door. The field is right there. The field took a long time to get renovated, and now is in danger of getting dust and the children as well.
Thank you.
I would like to speak. My name is Brian Goke. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name is Brian Goke. I'm co-president of the Hurley Blocks Neighborhood Association. The Ebenezer Baptist Church, Reverend Thompson, have been a fixture in our neighborhood for more than a century. They've been wonderful neighbors, and...
So please get to tell us exactly, okay?
Listen, I, as far as the the church leadership enthusiastically supports this proposal, and so do I. And so do, that, I I submitted a letter with 12 names of of neighbors in support of this proposal. It's a diverse list of names of from West Springfield Street, from Permon Street, Worcester Street, and Chaumbett Avenue. And I think it's a wonderful proposal, and the church leadership supports it, and so do we.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Naomi?
Hi, my name is Naomi Schlossberg. My husband and I live at 88 Worcester Street, and our backyard fronts the alley shared by the church at 157 West Springfield. We would like to voice our full support of the proposed redevelopment, especially given the understanding that the congregation and the church want to relocate, and a key part of their relocation is selling this building at 157 West Springfield. The proposed conversion into condos would be a great thing monetarily for the church and a great outcome for the neighborhood, as we already have so few opportunities for additional housing. So we are full supporters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no future.
Okay, so no more, right, Ms. Ambassador?
That's correct. Oh, no, sorry, one just popped up. I don't, you want to switch?
Let's let, Ms. Abida, please be fast. You know what, Ms. Ambassador, we just need to close all comments. Can I, Mr. Counselor, Counselor, can you have any response to any of the comments that were made?
Madam Chair, George Marancy, very quickly, I realize time is not an ally to us here. Mr. Olick's comments initially about a nine-unit project, again, want to reiterate, there is an IDP unit. It is a, it is a 670 square foot one-bedroom unit. It's been identified by the BPDA as unit two in the project. In terms of violations, we've an F of 2.3...
I'm sorry, it's, so it's the smallest unit essentially, one of the...
No, 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 there are, no, there are three one-bedrooms. They're all essentially the same. It's one of the three one-bedrooms, and it is the one on the lower floor, which is accessible. As to the restricted roof structure violations, not a height violation, has to do with changing the profile of the roof. There's a cited usable open...
Hold on, Mr. Marancy. Ms. Ambassador, can everybody be muted? May I have the board have a discussion, and then we can move to a motion?
And you want to point out there's no usable open space violation. I think that's also important.
Okay, and Ms. Marancy, we're gonna have to defer this if if everybody doesn't keep quiet, okay? So may I have any conversation, any proposed motion?
So in light of the fact that it's nine, but with an IDP, which I think is key, I'd like to make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
Mr. Richiello?
Joe, I don't think we need to have it because it was on the landmarks.
Yeah, sorry, so strike...
Give her a second.
Yeah, I, based on that same comment, I will second that motion.
So, Madam Chair...
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye. The affordable units.
I'm sorry?
Madam Chair, can I suggest that the board include a proviso that the applicant identify the, you know, affordable units?
Yes, the provi, the provi, with the with the proviso that it's unit number two as council specified.
Okay.
Yep.
And the motion carries, so you're all set. Good luck. Thank you, Ms. Panato. We'll see you in a bit.
Aye, thanks.
Okay?
Thank you.
Going to the last case.
Calling the last case, calling BOA 120252955, Bowden Avenue. This is a renovation of an existing two-family into a four-family, one car garage along with a lot of space above, which will be adjacent unit. The existing lower unit, one duplex, will be converted into two units. The violation, Article 65, Section 8, dwelling unit located in the basement is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, four-dwelling unit use is in the zoning subdistrict is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Timothy Sheen. I'm the architect for the project. I'm representing Kathleen McParson and Gabrielle Jenkins and Kathleen's husband, Matthew. So this has been through the board before. We've had a few deferrals. We've had to go back to ISD and redesign the project. So coming through now, what exists there now are, it's a two-unit building, it's a duplex over duplex. There are, the bottom duplex currently has three bedrooms, two are in the basement, one's upstairs, and then the upper unit is just, is just four bedrooms now.
So, Mr. Sheen, let's back, back... So, Mr. Sheen, let's back, back, uh, what is the zoning district?
This is, it's two-family, 6,000.
Two-family, 6,000, and what is the loft area on this?
It's 9,600 square feet.
9,600 square feet, and you're still proposing four families?
Yes.
And, uh, you're still provide, proposing the garage with loft space?
Yeah, so the gar, yeah, it's gonna be its own unit now, there'd be a garage with living space under it and a living floor above it.
And tell us about the basement unit, in the, the basement unit?
Yeah, the existing basement unit, it's a full walkout at the back on the south side. Um, we're in, we're increasing the window areas, so light and air requirements will be doubled. Uh, sills are at 30 inches, one of the bedrooms downstairs will be eliminated and turned into a living room, and we'll put a set of French doors in and make a window on the, on the west side bigger. So in that unit will be 677 square feet over the 610 the BPDA likes to see.
What neighborhood is this, and this is in Dorchester?
Yeah, it's Bowden Ave, yes, it's just above, it's about 30 feet above Washington Street, just one block off of...
I, I think I gotta understand why we need a basement unit?
Um, well, what's going on, are these owner-occupiers? So, the three-bedroom unit is hard to rent, and I looked at it, it's, it's just a perfect basement, you know, I know you don't like basement apartments, but it fully exposes on the backside, we've got plenty of southwest light, we've got good ceiling height at 711. Um, it, it just, it's just a basement because the way it sits in the hill, the front edge of it is buried. So, you know, we, we looked at it, and it just makes more sense, it's easier than for the rent, they're, they're, the people on the, on the unit one and unit two commonly gonna work together on this, and this is the rest of their lives, you know, this is the rest of the life house. So, it makes them, makes it possible to do the rest of the renovations by adding these two, you know, basically adding the two units. One unit being the addition on the left, and the other one being converting the existing basement duplex into two separate viable units. You know, one at 677 square feet with a full southern walkout exposed. And then the middle, you know, the, the ground floor entry, you know, the first floor entry will be, you know, a nice 870 square foot two-bedroom unit. It just works better for, for my clients.
And tell us about the addition, what's the addition?
Uh, the addition is off the left side, it's 28 feet long by 19 feet 4 inches wide. It's two stories high from the front, and if you look at the elevations, you know, if you look at the elevations, I've been very careful about maintaining that Victorian style of the building and having the addition subservient to the main house. And that would be for, you know, for the person who's in unit two now, who's on it, Gabe, that would be his unit. And that's it, you know, and that's, it's, I, you know, I think it looks pretty good, I think it works with the architecture that's there, and we've kept it as minimal as possible, it's only three floors because of the way the building, the way the site drops off down, going towards Washington Street.
And how's parking working, 'cause I noticed that that's not a violation?
Yeah, I've got it right here. Basically, right, we have there right now is a, is a asphalt driveway with one car. So, and the curb cut is over wide, the curb cut's 14 feet plus. So my thought was to expand the driveway in the front and, and along with a, a spot in the garage, we'd have three spaces.
Okay.
So we provided for the two additional units, and truthfully, they, you know, these client, they're all together, so they'll, they'll make it work. You know, it's, it's one grouping of people.
Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, uh, I, I, I can't disagree, it, you know, the site does fall off. Uh, the lower level unit is, is decent, it's not, I don't think it's even a stretch, I think it does seem to sort of provide the space. I, you know, I have a little bit of the heartache of going from, uh, two to four. Um, but I think in terms of the overall proposal, it's, it's, um, it's scaled pretty nicely. I, I don't think it's encroaching too closely on the adjacent left-hand, I think it's left-hand neighbor, a 10-foot-six setback, so, um... Other than that, I, I think it's, 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 it's a, a fair proposal, I think, from this site, so I agree with the site point.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just on the basement floor plan, are the bedrooms situated, uh, towards the rear walkout, or where, how are they...
Yeah, they're right on the rear walkout, so that, I mean, the bedroom, you'd have to, you know, yeah, yeah, it's just, they're, they're on the southwest side, which is the back.
Okay, so, so they have plenty of light?
Yes, it's, it's pretty good.
Or, or is it shattered by the decks?
It's, it's, yeah, it is under the deck, but the decks, you know, the way that deck is, it's up nine feet, you know, it's up nine feet off that ground level, just the way it work, because of the high floor-to-ceiling. So they'll get some light, yeah, it's not perfect sunlight, but they'll get light.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Denise De Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. I would like to go on record and state that the applicant has met with the Butters twice in the association a few different times to present this, and they have the Butters and Neighborhood Association support. At this time, we would like to defer to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no additional written scans.
Um, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, uh, Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Uh, we're actually in opposition to this project due to the fact that, um, many of the Butters have contacted us, and, uh, they think the project is too dense.
They have, huh, okay. Um, I'm wondering if the, the, 'cause I haven't seen very many comments to us from the Butters on this project, okay, got, okay, anybody else?
Sorry about that.
May I have, um, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
I'll, I'll second that motion, Eric.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the meeting is now technically adjourned, but if board members could stay on for a minute, that would be fantastic.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Good luck.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.